Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Today is February 16th, 2023, and I'm going to call the meeting to order. All rise, please, for the... Let's... All right, we have a mishap here, but we're going to continue with the present rules. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just proves you can dress them up and can't take mine.
They can't take mine.
Dylan, do you want it?
Oh.
Well, I guess you really didn't need that.
No, I didn't. It proved now because it was leaking and I got a couple.
Yeah, got it and just don't know. For those of you who are joining us by Zoom, we usually don't have this much entertainment at the beginning of our meeting. But let me just set out a couple of rules while we straighten out the whatever we're messing with. Okay, so those who are zooming in, welcome to the meeting. And if, for some reason during our public hearings, you like to participate, you need to unmute yourself and make yourself known to us and we'll call on you. Just state your name and address for the record and you'll be able to provide your comments, okay? But in the meantime, please remain muted so that we don't get any feedback here in the chamber. And also, it makes for a clearer public record so that we have a clear... We have clear testimony, okay? Moving on, Maureen, thank you. Can we take a little pause, please?
Sure. June Daly. Andrew Lou Miller.
Here.
Turn on my microphone, sorry. Diane Jorsey.
Here.
Timothy Ziegman.
Here.
Brian Rogan. We're extracting any minute. Chairman Beale.
Here.
Scott Hamel.
Here.
Alternate Steve Biella Jr.
Here.
And alternate Nikki Sempitsky.
I thought she was coming, but she's not on the phone or anything, so I guess excuse.
Okay.
Okay, we have a quorum.
You do have a quorum.
All right, thank you.
And you, if you're your choice to see Brian, see Steve or Brian if necessary.
Yes, okay, Steve Biella, we're going to count on you to cover for Brian until Brian gets here. That would be great. So, moving on, we have the approval of the minutes for February 2nd, 2023. Has everyone had a chance to review them? If so...
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented.
All right, thank you, Ms. Jorsey. Thank you, Mr. Hamel, for the discussion. All those in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed, so move. Go ahead, Steve. Okay, I'm standing. All right, terrific. And one abstention, that would be Ms. Daly. Scheduling public hearings. We have the zone change applicant of William Jackson to change the zone. To change the zone of lot 27, block 106, lot 27A, block 106, lot 27B, block 106, Berlin Turnpike, from the Berlin Turnpike 2 to the Berlin Turnpike 1. The suggested date for this is April 2023. Do you understand from staff that we can accommodate this request at a point in March? Is there a specific date in March?
I'd suggest March 16th.
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for March 16th. Okay, as long as it's not going to be too much on your schedule, Maureen?
No, actually, we, when we anticipated the date, we allotted for referral to the regional agency, and that's not required because it's not adjacent to the town line. So, that's where the extra dates came from, and that is a problematic date with deadlines.
Okay.
The April date, so March is better.
All right, March 16th it is. We have a second. Second by Mr. Hamel for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Steve Biella?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Those opposed, so move. Onto new business, site plan amendment of Joseph Mongillo, Rocky Hill, Rocky River Realty for an 1,800 square foot restroom building in the existing training yard, EverSource 107, Selden Street. So, oh, we have someone here speaking for the applicant. Okay, good evening, how are you today?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Great. What do we got?
So, my name is Brian Phillips with Langmuir Engineering here on behalf of the applicant. This application is for a site plan amendment application, the EverSource Training Facility. And the portion of the facility, we're talking, I think Dylan is bringing up the plans here, but this is the southern end of the Wester Minus 108 property off of Demming Road. We've been in front of your commission a couple of times over the past few years. But this is the, the Training Yard facility, and this application is for the construction of a approximately 1,800 square foot restroom building. So, I think one more plant. So, here's the, the site plan. Towards this to the left. So, the application is for the restroom building, you know, the ancillary side launch around the building. There are two electric vehicle charging stations to page north of the building that will remain, and then we will add a third electric vehicle charging station for the hybrid lineman trucks. Go on, but there's questions?
Um, I guess what's it going to look like?
So, the, on the last page, there are floor plans and elevations. Men's and women's restroom as well as a small electrical or... Plaza as well.
Okay, so, when you, all right, so when you first came in with this proposal, there were no restrooms on site, or is this an addition to?
There, there are no currently, there are currently no restrooms on site. There, they have, the main building has restrooms. This is sort of a appearance to the site where they perform electrical and gas training. There are, you know, there were some porta potties on the site, and this is a restroom or a dedicated restroom for the site. We were here in October with an application for a gas training building. So, this will serve those, you know, taking classes at the gas training.
How did we miss this the first time?
So, the, my recollection, although I couldn't find it in the minutes, was that when they came in for the first phase of establishing the training yard, they, which was a primary electrical training, expanded to the gas training, et cetera, was that eventually they would probably be coming back with permanent buildings, but at that time, they were applying for sheds and training structures to just be used and that they had in their long-term plan, possibly putting in a couple of permanent structures, but at that time, do not, weren't moving forward with that phase. So, this is kind of the next phase that I was expecting, although I couldn't find it in the minutes.
Oh. I just made that because, I mean, it's something that we were normally envisioning that would be included in the building, so I'm a little bit surprised that it got passed, so to speak, and that now you're here before us with the addition. Maureen, does staff have any comments?
So, again, I did want to make that comment, that we were expecting this and that just the applicant confirmed that the new structure is within the confines of the existing fenced area.
Correct.
You're not going outside the existing train, training set area, and that all conditions regarding the operation of the training facility remain in effect per the previous approvals, including no additional clearing, particularly of the perimeter buffer, noting that this will be hooking up, I don't, not sure if he said it or not, to the existing sewer and water service, which is in the driveway to Selden Street, probably.
Yeah, there's you too.
Do a little line. Yeah, just that one, the one you are on, but just like highly to that area so they can see that it's just going down to the, the street there. And that it is at the defined height for an accessory structure of 15 feet, although the peak's higher, defined height is midpoint of the ridge. So, it's, it does stand at 15 feet for an accessory structure.
All right. You see any problems or?
I, I don't, I, we have not identified any concerns. It meets the zoning requirements as far as setbacks, et cetera.
And this is only for the employees' tubes?
Correct.
Okay. So, there'll be some, you know, just keeping in mind safety or whatever. It's like a key to an entrance or something? Like a security lock or whatever on it? Yeah, please.
My name is Ryan Miller with C.H.A. Architects. And basically, the whole training yard is got a fence around it, and the only way access is through a carburetor.
Okay, good, 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 good. All right, thank you for that. Commission, opening up for questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Diane. I'm, I'm surprised, I guess, at the size of the structure and that it appears that a third of it is set aside for the mechanical and electrical rooms that hadn't been taken care of prior to this, so why is that?
I can explain that. The mechanical room is serving the restroom. It's basically climate control for winter use and also summer use. The, the data closet is for, they like to bring in lines from the main building because of the certain distance drop-off for the U.D. fiber lines. They like to have, right now, I think they store some of the connections in the shed and want to remove from the shed into a permanent structure so that they could have a network connection at the site for trainers to have that top and so on, or some sort of pad. That's what that, all the rural area is for, just to house some network equipment.
So, will that be sort of serving a little bit as an office for the trainers? Or that's just for the communication?
Just the network room is just to house the rack system. It's just a utility room for the rack. Mechanical space is just to house the mechanical equipment to serve the restroom for climate control. Yeah, we want to keep it on, on the, on the roof. We didn't want any units on the roof to kind of get off the sight line, so we have it inside.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
So, this is in the northern section of the fenced-in area.
Correct.
And it's away from the kind of complex that being built.
Correct.
It's not, it's not a button down.
We're not proposing any tree clearing. This is all urban area.
Your mask got me a little confused because I just turned a couple of minutes. Where in the north was this?
All right, anyone else?
So, I'll make a motion to approve subject to staff comments, including conditions from the previous application remaining in effect, including the reference to no additional clearing and maintaining the building at the defined height restriction. Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ziegman for the discussion. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so move. Yeah, well, I had Steve Biella, who was seated for this. He's arrived.
Okay.
I'll have him seated, okay? Stand by in case we need you again.
No problem.
Yeah. Steve, can you also confirm for us that you approved of the application?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, welcome, Mr. Rogan. All right, onto the public hearings. We have the special permit use application of Linda Suskassian for an accessory dwelling unit at 5 Huckleberry Lane in the R15 Zone. This is going to be continued to March 2nd, 2023. Do we need a motion on that or just continuing? Okay, proposed amendment of Linda Allstrand. Okay, oh, all right, I'm sorry, go ahead with the call. Being interrupted. And I was on a roll.
I know, my bad.
I, this is terrible. It's incorrigible. I've got coffee here spilling, and I saw you with your coffee.
I would have brought two of them.
I know, and it was quite the mess, right in the middle of a pledge of allegiance. Okay.
All right. Town of Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission, notice of public hearings. The Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings on Thursday, February 16th, 2023, at 7:00 PM, Town Council Chambers, Berlin Town Hall, 240 Kennedy Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Interested parties may join the meeting and participate in the public hearing in person or remotely as provided below. A, additional event to the special permit use of the Berlin Land Agricultural Fair Incorporated, Orton, Beckley Road, for a May in Connecticut Expo on August 12th, 2023, and August 13th, 2023. B, application of Tony Valentini, Newport Realty Group LLC, for a tax amendment to Berlin zoning regulations, EF3A Village Core Area 1 relating to street level uses. C, special permits slash site plan application of Tony Valentini, Newport Realty Group LLC, for modifications to an approved mixed-use TOD development within the Kennedy and Overlay Zone, KO Village Core of Structures and Related Site Improvements at 55 Steel Boulevard. The applications and related meeting materials are available at the Planning and Zoning Department, Berlin Town Hall, 240 Kennedy Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Date this first day of February 2023 at Berlin, Connecticut. Brian Rogan, Secretary, Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission, New Britain Herald, legal notices slash specified advertising dates of publications, Saturday, February 4th, 2023, and Monday, February 10th, 2023.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, so moving on to the second item, was proposed amendment of Linda Allstrand to abolish the Berlin zoning regulations, Section 11DD, planned residential infill development. Now, this public hearing was open January 19th, and I guess we have to close it by February 23rd, and it is still open. Okay, so, do we have, yes, I see already, I have volunteers from the public who wish to speak and address the commission, so come on, please, stand.
Can I clarify something?
Yes, please.
We have new members since the last meeting, so, and I don't remember if Steve Biella was seated on this or not. So, I just want to confirm that the new members are familiar with the application. That's right, people are seated.
Okay. The new member would be Mr. Scott Hamel. And are you familiar with the application?
I feel bad.
Recusing, okay.
From that, for that, you know.
Okay. All right, so Steve Biella, he's seated on the side, I'm okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right.
Okay, we're all set. I have to tell you, about an hour ago, I came down with laryngitis.
Oh, no.
Is that crazy or what?
It's the weather.
It must be. I've been chatting for Linda, who's sick and couldn't make it tonight, so I couldn't very well let her down, but I am reading her letter for her, so.
Oh, my goodness. Do you want somebody else to read it for you?
No, but you understand me, I think you can.
Yeah, I just don't want to make a bad situation painful for you.
No, it's okay, it's not painful, it's just there.
Yeah, all right.
I will speak my piece here, all in this piece. Anyhow, my name is Pedro Riley from 100 Peter Parley Row, and I'm speaking for Linda Allstrand, who is 48, Holly Court. This planned residential infill development text amendment was passed on May 6th of 2021 without taxpayers being notified. This amendment is intended to only redevelop vintage motels into high-density rental housing under the governor's COVID emergency powers. The only legal notification requested necessary to the taxpayer about this potential amendment was to list it on the town website, which very few people read. This was legal, very legal, but we feel as though it was underhanded and not ethical nor fair, a fair way to communicate with the townspeople. I know that Maureen has spoken to this and has her position on it and defended it, but we still feel as though it was underhanded and unethical. We also feel it was apparently too much for the zoning staff to post a short statement regarding this potential amendment in the Berlin citizen, which had over 9,100 subscribers at that time. Had this happened, we neighbors would have had a chance to respond to this debacle. It is obvious that we were to be kept in the dark. That's exactly how we feel. If only, if only, we had known what was happening to us. This amendment will take BT1, zone commercial properties, off the tax walls forever. Constructing high-density rental properties will mean higher costs for schools, police, fire, and social programs, resulting in higher taxes for all Berlin taxpayers. It's a given. Why is there no emphasis on affordable home ownership? We have brought this to the attention to the board many, many times. Home ownership is a real plus. That means people have to be vested in our community. It's not just a place to sleep or take our resources. However, this amendment has harmed our upbringing neighborhood. The developer is now suing the town, and we on Holly Court continue to be stuck in the crosshairs. If only, if only, we have been informed of this impending disaster and have been involved in the public hearings of April and May of 2021. Again, I emphasize, if only the commission or staff had actually read the terribly written amendment, if only, if only they had gone to the site at 1676 Berlin Turnpike to assess what the amendment actually stated and what the jammed and squeezed together high-density units would look like. Again, I want to emphasize, if only revisions had been made. But the amendment was posted until November 15th, 2021, with an effective date of November 16th, the day after. The application was being heard at the November 18th commission meeting. There are few, we feel as though there was a devious push to get everything in line for the healing, for the hearing, not the healing hearing. And unbelievably, at the February 2nd, 2023 commission meeting, Patrick Snow, the developer of 1676 Berlin Turnpike, had the gall to proposition all Holly Court people that if we dropped our petition to abolish the amendment, he would come to our rescue and reimburse us our filing fee of $460. Got to say, we were speechless. We really also like to continue to say that we, with the dealings with this gentleman, we would hope that this guy sells the property and then he moves on. I think it could be well-understood that we really don't want anything further to do with him, and we'd like to request at this time that the planned residential infill development text amendment be abolished. So, this is signed to Linda Allstrand, 48, Holly Court. So, thank you for hearing.
Thank you, you did a very nice job.
Yeah, I will.
Yes.
Oh, yes, thank you. You also have someone raise their hand.
Okay, oh, yes, okay, so we see that Patty Bergio. I believe I'm saying that correctly, you wish to address the commission?
I do, can you hear me okay?
Uh, yes, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, it's Patty Bergio, 27, Holly Court in Berlin.
Yes, okay.
Okay, thank you in advance for hearing our concerns. I'm speaking out this evening with sincere frustration, disappointment, and concern. As a resident of Berlin my entire life, I have always prided myself with my town and the people that are in it. For the last year or so, we have been dealing with planning and zoning regarding 1676 Berlin Turnpike and the text amendment specifically written for Patrick Snow. I am at a loss, sitting at every meeting, whether in person or on Zoom. We feel the poorly-written text amendment was passed in the most devious manner, undermining the neighbors that are affected by it the most. It was terribly written and pushed through, concerning me that it wasn't even read properly and that the decisions were made without careful thought and consideration of the very people who pay their taxes, vote, and care for our town and our homes. With all due respect, I'm noticing that in just about every meeting, Maureen feels the need to defend herself in the decisions made with regard to this text amendment. I want to be clear that while we do realize that this was done legally, we certainly don't believe it was done ethically. Did anyone ever take the time to physically come over to the site and see how ridiculous the plans were? Cramming all those units in such a small space, removing existing buffers, allowing the elevation to tower over the homes on Holly Court? Did you realize how much stress and fear we felt with the looming concern that our private properties and our cul-de-sac could be lost in order to make a second entrance for this development? Clearly, we had to fight for ourselves because it was evident that nobody at Planning and Zoning was working in our best interests for taxpaying citizens. Sadly, using COVID and all of its glorious excuses to push something like this through while the neighbors were left in the dark was just disgraceful and unethical. I can't help but wonder how any of this would make any of you feel if it was happening in your backyard. I know you can do better for the residents of Berlin, and I implore you to make decisions based on what is best for the taxpaying citizens, not the builders who pad their pockets with profits from these bills. The residents of Holly Court and the surrounding area are a united front. We care for our neighborhood and our homes, and we take care of one another as neighbors should. Together, our opposition has been unwavering. Lastly, at the last planning and zoning meeting on a recorded Zoom, Patrick Snow was heard offering to pay back $460 personally to the neighbors who initially paid to be put on the agenda. He stated that if on that very evening we dropped the argument to abolish the text amendment, he would personally reimburse the residents of Holly Court the $460 fee. To be clear, the residents of Holly Court cannot be purchased nor bribed to do what's best for him. We live here, and we will continue to live here, and we will fight for what is right for us. He must really believe that we live in the armpit of Berlin, that a whopping $460 can change our minds so simply and so easily. There's not a chance. We are asking that Planning and Zoning recognize the residents, and again, make decisions that we entrust you to make with the utmost care and concern for the very people living in the areas that are affected by this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am. All right, so you don't have laryngitis.
No, but I got a flu. Yes, I did.
It's a red banner night.
This is a non-vaccine thing.
Okay. Sherry Rice, 38, Holly Court. Thank you for allowing me to address you tonight in support of the abolishing the planned residential infill development text amendment. Over the past year, the residents of Holly Court and the surrounding areas have outlined why the complex at 1676 Berlin Turnpike was not good for the town of Berlin, and we are grateful that the commission agreed. I don't want to stand up here and rehash previously, previously stated points, but rather share a few things. Many times in my career, I have seen policies created with the greatest of intentions, only to find out what looked good on paper did not have the intended results. And this amendment is a perfect example of that. How's the saying go, the road to hell is paved with good intentions? Over the years, as a Berlin girl born and raised, I have seen the town of Berlin make some good decisions, but also some bad decisions in the interest of the Berlin residents and taxpayers. This planned residential infill development text amendment would be one of the latter. I have to believe in my heart of hearts that week after week, the commission doesn't volunteer council hours of their time to sit here and say, how can we stick it to the residents and taxpayers of Berlin? As I have sat here or zoomed meeting after meeting for the better part of a year, I have heard the concerns for Berlin and have seen you listen to us. I understand the premise of wanting to get rid of dilapidated motel properties along the Berlin Turnpike. But is this amendment the right way? Are the issues with transient at local hotels and potential for illegal activity, are there similar issues with rental properties and complexes that cram residents on top of each other? Yes to both, and I've seen both firsthand. I believe through the process, the flaws in this amendment have come to light. Therefore, I urge you to consider the abolishment of this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? If we're on Zoom or in person. Commissioners, do we have any questions or? Comments?
Yes, I would like to address some of the issues that, first of all, this commission does everything the way the state regulations is designed. The application was... The application was noticed. Herald, it was people here that had concerns and people that were afforded at our meetings, public hearing meetings. Now, the application that was there has been denied. My opinion was that it wasn't the vision that we visioned by the fires rental units. Anyone can rent their home. So anyone on Holy Court can rent their homes, same as the single-family residence and homes or two-family homes in the town of Berlin anywhere can rent your home. That's nothing more than, it's something as a homeowner that you can do. The improvement of the property were really looked into awful lot. We had a list from our economic developer of every property that was in concern of the infill property. We knew every property that was. This particular property I knew very good over the years, my seventy years in town. I mean, all mall. But the amendment was brought in by a developer, which he has the right to do, or any public person in town can bring a limit to any zoning issue. That is another right by state laws and our laws, our regulations, that anyone can bring in the proposal. But we reviewed the proposal in many, many meetings. It was reviewed by CROG, the regional people and approved from them. And we took in text information from public and from every commissioner on. The infill was there for a purpose of helping the Berlin Turnpike in the situations that we have on the Berlin Turnpike. Single-family residential or even two-family residential would be something better than the hotels that we've received, many money, many police actions and down to a murder when hotels are two murders, actually. So it's, it's an environmental thing that we had to address and see how we can fix it. It was not taken it from commercial, which is hotel, which is residential because it's people living on mostly deficiency units. They have a little kitchen and they're fishing units. People rent them by the week instead of a month or they can rent them by the month. But so you could get your home too. So everything was considered by this commission about the infill development. Again, the application was not in our vision. And the next item going down tonight is trying to modify it into our vision. Anyone wants to address any issues? I'm willing to talk to anyone. And I'm sure any other commissioners will talk to anyone on, on this issue. But our, I want to stick up for a town planner which did a fabulous job on this. Had everything, all the ducks in a row, everything done. If there was a wrong posting, it was reposted. Okay, everything was done correctly as our rules and the state rules. So anyone says that this commission tried to do anything underhanded is a total false statement. And I offense to that, being volunteers up here for years, to be saying that we're trying to do anything underhanded to the town of Berlin. I'm a resident lifelong, seventy months, seventy years. I am not trying to screw anyone in the town of Berlin.
Thank you, Tim. Is there anyone else?
Yes.
Diane. Thank you. I just have one comment and I'm going to share or save the rest that I have to say for our deliberation. I just want to be clear in this portion of the meeting that at the last meeting, and this is in no way my position to defend Mr. Snow. But when Ms. Allstrand was speaking at the last meeting, there was a, what came across to us as a request or seemed to be a request for a refund of the fee to file this application for the abolishment. And it was, I asked so that it was on the record if Ms. Allstrand was withdrawing her application because the withdrawal then might have prompted a refund. The fact that Mr. Snow offered to reimburse those fees after Ms. Allstrand said that she felt sort of hopeless, knowing that there's an alternate proposal that's being considered. I think that was his attempt to simplify what might otherwise be a very complex legal mess. It's being made into dirty business that just is not happening.
So if I could, I'm sorry I'm late. There was a very bad accident on the Berlin Turnpike and I looked really not good.
Sorry.
So I hope that it was evolved or, or okay. But I, that, I just want to speak to what, what you just said, Commissioner Jersey. So there was a request made by the applicant to in fact, send a letter to the town council in support of a refund of the application fee. So I do think that that's accurate and, and I, you know, I've been at, I don't always attend every meeting. You know, I'm asked to attend when legal assistance is needed for the commission. And I, you know, I sat through much of the application process and obviously I'm handling the appeal. And there was a lot of effort made by the applicant to respond to concerns of the neighborhood. And I, and I think that that's important to know. I want to remind everybody that the Planning and Zoning Commission, the recordings, since you've been doing hybrid, which you did all through really COVID, I mean, you were, my friend represents many towns. And, you know, you provided that ability for people to participate through COVID in a hybrid way, whether they came in person again or participated via Zoom, which was, which was great. But, you know, that's the record and, and that's, that's the facts on it. So I don't think he was attempting to do something nefarious. You know, his project engineer is somebody who has a very good reputation in the state of Connecticut. When I hear words like unethical and underhanded, it troubles me. And it troubles me with, for the fact that I am your legal counsel, that I do review text amendments for you, and I do know what the process is. That staff goes through to draft regulations for you. And, and I also know you to be, because I've been representing you for a long time, a very active commission who gives a lot of input to the text amendments that are initiated by your commission. And I have, I do have an understanding of why this text amendment was brought forward. And I, I want to emphasize something. And, and this is, this is something I know everybody is aware of. We're having a lot of discussion about affordable housing. And there's articles every day about it. Okay, your town has done a terrific job in terms of attempting to meet its obligation. And, you know, a big part of that is having zoning regulations that encourage affordable housing. And this infill regulation, it's, it's a mechanism that's been talked about in the affordable housing realm for years. So, you know, I, I want to kind of give some meat to the bones for people who are involved in zoning to understand just how out of place it is to say that something underhanded happened here. You have an excellent planner. You also have Jim Mahoney, a terrific consultant. And I know that he was involved in drafting this zoning regulation that folks are asking to be abolished. He is a single person, I think Maureen would agree with me, who has, he has tremendous historical knowledge. He worked hard with me and with Maureen and the consultant on the Affordable Housing Plan, and I know what he brings to the table. So I just, you know, I make those comments because what I wanted to hear more of, and we did have some comments, but just for your benefit, I listen, you know, what is it that people find objectionable? And what I've heard is a lot of vitriol as opposed to, you know, I don't like this provision, I don't like that provision. And, and, you know, we need to have more of that, right? You know, when you're charging that people are engaging with ethical conduct, from a legal perspective, that has a very particular meaning. You have an ethics code. And I challenge anybody who's going to say that, that they need to have their facts. And there's a process, and it is a very unfair to your staff. And, and I have to say, I would not typically say this, but I've never experienced this in twenty-five years, hearing what I, I've sat here after multiple meetings and I've listened to your planner be berated. And as your counsel, it is very unacceptable in this process. It really is, for how hard she works. And that's all I'm going to say.
I'm just, I beg your, yes, thank you, Jennifer. And so with respect to the request for a refund, I was unaware that such a request had been made. I want to have it on the record that from at least my perspective, and I would assume the rest of the commission, that the request for refund be denied for the simple fact of the amount of time that staff has put into assisting and providing assistance throughout the application process. And we got to the point where we're ready to close a public hearing. After all this work is done, and now there's a request for refund that just is not warranted.
So can I counsel, just counsel you on that point? I, I think that, you know, you're basically making a motion of sorts. I think everybody should weigh in. I mean, I, I think, you know, it's not gone, this request to my knowledge is not gone to the council yet, if, if it is made to the council. But the one thing about it in terms of the commission supporting a refund at this, at this stage, given what's transpired, what I, it's almost amounts to buyer remorse, if you will, that if you don't get the outcome that you'd like, then you should be entitled to a refund. I mean, there's other reasons for, you know, giving a refund. If there's an issue of means or something, there's, I, I'm sure the town probably has a process with regard to that, as some towns do. But, you know, it's not that you get to a certain stage and, and you believe that you're not going to get the outcome that you want. And so, you know, you, you want to ask for a refund at that point. I mean, I don't know. A lot of people asking for refunds, pretty much everybody that you denied. Well, that's, you know, and I'm not meaning to make light of the request because, you know, obviously it's not five dollars. And, and I absolutely understand that, you know, the amount is a meaningful amount for really most applicants. You know, there's costs and, and there's costs all the way around for the, for applicants, for people who, who challenge an application. Sometimes there's costs, as you know. So, yeah, that's, that's the problem with it, I think, is that it, it's almost asking you to draw a line in the sand.
It's acceptable.
And I think that that's a problem for you to do that. And I would indicate to you that I don't think it's legally appropriate for you to support something to that.
This commission doesn't have the power to refund monies. Those fees are.
And that's the other.
The fees are, are set by the town, set by, by the town council and anyone can request anything they want to the council, but this commission doesn't have, there's already say, oh, you come in with this, you wanted this, I will give you money back. We don't have that thing because it's not our money. It's the town money.
No, but my comment is only to make the point that significant time has been spent by staff on this application. And I know in my own job that that's a consideration if somebody wishes to withdraw an application. And so the amount of time dedicated to this application should be noted. Maureen.
I just, I'm just at one point that I want to comment on at this time is that a significant amount of the fees that are collected are for the publication of the notices. So that's, that's money that the town puts out in order to process the application because the papers are not inexpensive to run that in. Hundreds of dollars.
Thank you, Maureen. So we are still in the public hearing. Does anyone else wish to comment? Because I do know that we have to make a decision on closing the public hearing today. Yes, ma'am? You have your hand raised?
Okay.
Dr. Riley from Peter Polyro again. I understand and I remember Linda requesting a refund, but I think she was also under the opinion that the amendment was going to get revisited and some changes were possibly going to be made that were going to be favorable to the town and favorable to the homeowners of Holy Court. Now, I could be correct in that, but I don't think so, as I recall. That's what I remember her saying. So I just figured I would just stay dead for what it's worth. Okay?
Okay. Thank you very much for that.
I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this. We have to close it because we don't have another meeting before the twenty-third of this month.
Okay, so we have a motion to close the public hearing. We have the second already by Ms. Jersey. Do we have further discussion on this item? Other than all those in favor? Those opposed, so moved. Okay. On to the proposed amendment of planning and zoning staff to the Berlin zoning regulations, section eleven DD, planned residential infill development. And so this is, this is a text amendment that we have been working on. It sort of dovetails on, dovetails on the previous application that was before us. And we had quite a lively discussion last time we were here regarding densities and. I just want to get to my paperwork.
We have copies of the revised.
I don't think so. No, no new print was. I've only been in the office two days.
Okay, because we have a, we talked about the different, the different buffers. And we talked about the setbacks. And what it came down to basically is that we were looking at what is acceptable for units per acreage. And one thought is that we're going to approximately four units per acre. And then another thought was five, five per acre. And what it really does boil down to when you look at what an acre is, forty-three thousand square feet, is you're looking at like an R seven zone. It like an R seven zone versus an R eleven zone. Now, the whole purpose, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody here, the whole purpose of this zone, this text amendment. Was to breathe life into some properties that are struggling down the Berlin Turnpike. And these properties are the motels, the rundown motel businesses. And to give the owners of those properties a chance to revisit and to redo. And to reclaim the property to make it something viable going forward. A lot of these places are family owned, and um, the mortgages or whatever are very well paid for, years gone by. But they still operate on a weekly basis, a daily rental, hourly, monthly, and a lot of them have. Um, issues with having basically a motel, which is a bedroom and a bathroom, but now they're bringing in hot plates. And they're making kitchens, and so you have these fire hazards and everything else. So. We're trying to perk things up, we're trying to make things better for people who are in a situation who wanna reinvest in the property. And that was the whole reason why we revisited this, is to give them a a breath of fresh air, so to speak. To be able to do something different with what they have. Um, but that is basically the way I see this this text amendment. And with that, we had left off with the idea, should we go with four units versus five units? And then, of course, the discussion involved around, um. If you're visiting these sites on the Berlin Turnpike, they're pretty much encased in themselves. And so the argument spanned to, if you go with four units, you're allowing them to have some more open greenery space. So where they can almost establish their own little community, as opposed to. If you overcrowd it, then these people have to go out for a sense of community. So we were trying to figure out the balance with that as well. And I think that's about where we left off. With the discussion, the best of my, I, that's my recollection, so is there anything else that we wanna add into that?
I will add to that. So I did, we did a little more work. Um. And so you got the package of the maps last time of each motel site.
Yep.
So since then, we did a quick calculation, because my takeaway was that you were leaning towards the R eleven. And did a quick calculation for each of them on how many, on simple map. Simple eleven thousand two fifty square feet per unit for the per dwelling for the R eleven zone. Um, and simple map using the acreage listed on the assessor's record, so that's not survey acreage, it's. Just general acreage, um, assessed acreage. Um, and we did a quick calculation of how many units would be allowed on each, and I would like to run through those. Because um, I am um, add to um. Chairman Bailey's comments with regard to the ability for owners to have some incentive to. Upgrade the properties, for lack of a better word, and this being something to upgrade. Um, and whether or not it was economically feasible. So, the property at one oh two Berlin Turnpike. Um, had sixteen units listed as far as um, motel units. Our eleven zoning would allow five point seven.
That would be the R eleven?
Our eleven equals five point seven units when they currently have sixteen.
Okay.
Again, those units that they have may or may not be legitimate efficiencies for any of, for any of the motel sites. We haven't analyzed who has legitimate efficiency apartments and who does not. Or units, I should say, they're all motel units, are supposed to be less than thirty day stays in order to qualify as a motel. Um, we know that many of the motels have occupants who. Um, leave for one day and come back. They, all their stuff gets left. But they leave for the day in order to qualify and keep it a motel. That's been reported to us by the health district. Um, we also know that there are units that are bedroom units that are bound to have. Hot plates and and other um, electrical appliances, et cetera, to create a dwelling unit when it's not. Um, up to code or permitted for a dwelling unit. So, um, now I'll go back to the listing unit. So that was one oh two Berlin. One seventy.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Would it be possible to show what we have on the screen or no?
We have those.
I I have the, I have the packet here.
I unfortunately don't think we scan them, but we can get a set and scan them quickly. One of us can run downstairs while, you wanna run downstairs while I'm talking? Do you have another set? They can make that set, that would be great. And I'm sorry for that.
I'm gonna give you the whole packet, because I'm not sure which what what you're gonna need to look at. I started right.
That that ideal world, I would love it up there. So. And I handed it out as a supplemental at the last meeting, and I doubt that got scanned after. Um, so, and would you like me to wait until that's done, and we can continue the discussion otherwise?
As a refreshing memory, um, I did review the tape from the last meeting. R seven would have been five point eight. Is R eleven the four homes per acre? Is that the R eleven?
Basically, it's eleven thousand two hundred and fifty square feet per acre, so twenty-two thousand square feet. So I mean, per unit, so twenty-two per acre, yeah, so, thank you. Um, so I.
Okay, so.
Continue the discussion, maybe you have another comment. I I guess, uh, what my takeaway on this will be, I'll give you the takeaway first. Is that I am concerned that if you go to R eleven, it won't. Um, actually be common effective regulation.
It's not gonna incentivize.
It won't incentivize, and it won't be economically feasible for. For redevelopment. Um, again, on those maps, we put the side and rear setbacks of the adjacent properties and the prop. Each of those properties, so they could see where um, varying setbacks might sit, um, and where the existing buildings are. Um, and remember, existing buildings, and I gave this testimony already, but just as a quick reminder that. Um, if existing buildings were to stay, they wouldn't necessarily have to give up their. Nonconforming setback that they might already have. So, the incentive to redevelop. Is it, that's another thing, we, you could get compliance setbacks, um, in most cases. Though they'd be argument, they'd be um, discussion with regard to it and the nonconformity, but substantially rebuilt.
And so that's based on a thousand square foot max, right?
On what?
For the each of the dwellings. The house would be a maximum thousand square feet.
I that, I left that in the regulation. You add, you asked that the garages be included, and so that was gonna be changed as of the last meeting. It's not changed on the version on the screen right now, because we didn't do an update. I don't think I did an update during the meeting.
As well as the unfinished base, and what that included in the thousand.
We can run through.
So is it moving then to a, is it moving then to a thousand square foot living space? Or is it going down because they probably have a garage? Or is it going down in size like?
So I believe that, I believe the instructions were to include the thousand square, the garage calculation in the one thousand square feet. We have quick machines, when they work.
This thousand feet uh, home.
Did you want to show that website? You have to pull it up.
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
Little homes. Uh, Google Little Homes, it came up, it's a. A little family homes lamps dot com, but uh. And there's examples of what a thousand square foot home is looked like. Uh, and if you're going with a R seven zone. Uh, those are, yeah, those are the houses right there. Uh, you go to R seven zone. Uh, you're gonna have a building box to build in. Your backyard is so deep, thirty, forty, fifty feet, whatever you.
Yes.
Your front yard is thirty feet, whatever, and your side yards. So inside that little building box. You can build a home, what you want. Okay, if we go to a thousand square foot biggest home. There's still a spot to put a one single, single, uh, single car garage on it, in that building box. Okay, if you want to. Uh, but it's still in the building box, it's still, they got your side yards, it's still got your rear yards. That you're looking for, that you get them away from each other a little bit. And uh, so, so it's the living space, which is the thousand square foot. You know, some 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 homes right there, those are just the prices of the plant, the one, but. But those little homes right there. Me, as a elderly guy, I would love to have a two bedroom home with two full baths in it, that size. I don't want my three thousand square foot home no more. And I think that would be a good incentive for young couple or older couple to do. And that's what the reason why this little home concept that I thought of would be.
So right here, he's pulled up one that is pretty close to the thousand square feet. I think it's a thousand twenty-five that they came up at. So, you're talking a bedroom area at ten by ten, a full bath with a tub. Um, the second bedroom at twelve by twelve.
Twelve by twelve, and the second bedroom, master bedroom.
And then twelve foot wide living room and ten foot by kitchen area.
Yes, and then the end, the the square, the thirty-four foot by thirty-one foot building.
That well, that's got a second floor.
Might have a second.
Thirty-four by thirty-four is almost.
Because when you, when you put those types of things, roofs on, you come up with a.
That is the ten fifty-four.
So that picture there is how many square feet?
Ten fifty-four.
Ten fifty-four.
I think when we did this regulation, that's what we envisioned.
That's what we thought we were gonna have.
Right, right.
So, within the amendment, um, the the modifications to the regulation that are proposed. Um, I did change the, I believe, please let me find it, to a single story. Or a one and a half story. So I put it at one and a half stories or twenty-five feet, and you were having the discussion about further changing that this, um, at the last meeting. To one story or no.
Okay, so let's go back to the, let's go back to the list of properties that are affected by this, because you said it was. We said one oh two Berlin Turnpike, if it was an R eleven, it's five point seven.
Right, so five, yeah, so the way that, I believe the way the regulation was written, some of our regulations, I'm sorry, I've read so many regulations. Last month, I think it was rounded down, so it would be five units, like I said, when they have sixteen motel units. Um, now, of course, the regulation also had the addition to it to a lim, to not include. Um, any area categorized as wetland or flood plain, so that. Could make some of these parcels even smaller. We don't know where, which ones have wetlands and flood plains and which ones don't.
Doing those calculations, the square footage of the property divided by seventy-five hundred square foot or whatever.
It's just a simple, simple math.
It's not taking into consideration road sidewalks.
Right.
Whatever's required in there. Uh, wetlands, not taken into consideration, any other topo things that they can't change. You know, so really taking in a flat piece of property with no problem at all.
And not even the setbacks, that doesn't even consider.
Normal, small road and uh, you know, and having your setbacks and stuff like that. So, so actually, when you calculate it later, so I'm gonna go calculate it out. But it's gonna be a little less, so if you have four point eight houses or five houses, it'll probably be four. You know, uh, depending on the the land.
All right, so if you're, so looking at one oh two Berlin Turnpike, if the R eleven yields five houses. Per acre, all right?
No, five houses on that.
On that lot.
That lot would would allow the motel property that currently has sixteen motel units. Would yield five point seven redevelopment units.
Okay, so but if it was an.
If it wa, I didn't do our stuff. I just, you were leading towards the R eleven, so.
Okay, all right.
You can then come back with the R seven shortly. The one seventy-six Berlin Turnpike.
Yep.
Currently is twenty-five units, um, one point seven two acres, and would yield six point six dwelling units. Three fifty-four Berlin Turnpike is point six nine units. Um, I don't think we, oh, it has thirteen units. I'm sorry, point six nine acres has thirteen units and would result in two point six units. That's only two. Um, six ninety-seven Berlin Turnpike has thirteen motel units. And if it had an R eleven calculation on the one point two acres, it would be four point six units. Eight twenty-nine Berlin Turnpike.
I'm sorry, that's six ninety-seven Berlin Turnpike would bring it down to one point four.
Four point six.
Four point six.
Six ninety-seven, yeah. Eight twenty-nine Berlin Turnpike is currently fifteen motel units. And with our eleven calculation would be four point three units on one point three, one three acres. Eight eleven Berlin Turnpike, currently twelve units. Our eleven would be two point nine units on point seven six acres. Eleven ninety-one Berlin Turnpike, currently twelve units. Our eleven calculation would be seven point three dwelling units on one point eight nine acres. That's one of the larger parcels, I believe. Fourteen oh one Berlin Turnpike is currently eleven units. Um, I didn't find on here the calculation of acreage, it is one point one seven acres. And that would yield four point five dwelling units. Sixteen seventy-six Berlin Turnpike, that is the little house, living property. Um, is one point nine five acres and would yield seven point five units.
I'm sorry.
I think we had a debate on that. I think we were at twelve.
Twelve.
It give or take a couple, because there was some un. Unconfirmed information about the um, bigger buildings that were on site with caretaker's house and units that were in there. Seventeen thirty-seven Berlin Turnpike, currently fourteen units, would yield seven point three units on one point eight nine acres. Eighteen sixty-seven Berlin Turnpike, ten. Ten units, is currently ten units on one point nine one acres, and would yield seven point four units. Nineteen oh six Berlin Turnpike, currently nine units, would yield three point five units on point nine one acres.
I'm sorry, that number goes through.
Three point five. Twenty-four forty-seven Berlin Turnpike, Turnpike is twenty units. On one point six one acres and would yield six point two units. And that's.
The end of it?
So.
Yeah, that looks like it. Yeah.
Well, with that calculation, so it's our eleven. Hell. Owner. Or developer. Wouldn't motivate any change in the property at all, because it's not enough units to sustain it, to. Make it any profitable, so to. Build on it. And not build as many units as on each property now, it probably got fifteen units on it, probably will be. In our seven zone, probably. Nine units to be able to put on the property, motivate. The owner to do something, get fifteen units out of single, units out of there and have single family residential. But our eleven zone won't motivate anyone to do anything, improve those properties. That's, that's the reason why I came up to our seven, that's my opinion.
Yeah, okay, well, just, just to balance that out, just to sort of counter, just for discussion purposes. I looked at the R eleven and I was attracted to the R eleven, because if I was a property owner that had some of these motels in my possession, chances are they've inherited the property, it's well been mortgaged out, anything. Any value is, is well paid for, so what they're dealing with right now is just cash in the head. So if, if I, I, so my choices are to continue to collect thirty dollars a day from these people, and probably have to chase them for that. Because some of these are really very transient places, and then, of course, be worried about the hot plate, you know, causing a fire or something. Or actually investing some of the money to make the property. To bring the property up to a point where I don't have to worry about if I'm gonna have somebody in room number six, you know, tonight or tomorrow or the next day. But rather, then I might be able to have a couple come in or even a single person come in and give me a monthly rent. Which is probably gonna be more than twenty-five or thirty dollars a day. And then actually have something worth, you know, moving on or, or perhaps even turning around and selling someday when you wanted to retire out. But at least I think you would have more options for it, as opposed to, you know, an as-is thing. But that's, that's my, my thing, my feeling is that maybe by giving them the chance to make something really nice about it. It would attract, you know, people who wanted to live in that setting and be on the turnpike. But, I mean, that's my, my feeling on it, so we are in a discussion, so. Anyone else?
Yeah, I would agree with Tim here. Just for the fact that the current cost of building demolition, by the time. You're done, if, if you did decide to throw your hat in and just sell the property, get out. The cost of things, now there's just really five, four units. Seven, there might be a little, but there's just. There's very little profit left to the point where there's any motivation. If we did consider the R seven, I would like to say, looking at the pictures that we just saw, that we get rid of the one point five story and go to a one-story building. And I think that we, as we were discussing four percentages, community things. Like dog parks and stuff like, we really emphasize those, make those requirements. Maybe. Work with. I don't know, put the garages in there, maybe that'd be something that's considered, but. Do we do it part of the thousand, do we add a little bit extra so it can work, do we more mimic the R seven zone? I do know that, like, when you hear people talking about the Berlin Turnpike, you know, if you just turn on the radio, it has a very. Negative view because of the turnpikes, I mean, there are commercials out there, you listen to music, and then they say, you with the Berlin Turnpike and all those creepy motels. So I do think it's an image that's hurting our town. So if we're gonna try and, if we're to go ahead and amend this, then we should at least. Bring amend this and keep it, then we should try and make it. Work for both the residents and the owners of motels.
I think ultimately that's what works.
Yes.
That's what we're all trying to do here.
And I think the R eleven might be a little bit too strict.
Yeah. Mr. Ham, will you have a comment?
I agree.
On which one?
What you're saying, I think is, I need to put four units or. From a business point of view, I mean, there's, it would make no sense to purchase something like that. For going forward, I mean, that, that turnpike is, I mean, I hate to say, obviously I live in town, but it's a mess. You know, and there's nothing, like we said last week, there's nothing. There's nothing south of Row Nine that's really, that jumps out at you, I mean, look at, you drive to North and they're putting all these buildings on the turnpike. We can't get that for some reason, you know what I mean, because of this.
Yeah. A lot has to do with the size of the lots that are on the turnpike.
I just don't, I, I agree that. Having this R eleven. It just doesn't make sense.
Okay, all right, yeah, yes.
I guess my concern here is, is that if our eleven isn't gonna work, we're gonna try our seven, is that gonna take away from some of the things that we were trying to strive for with little houses? Where we wanted the gazebo, where we wanted more. My concern of adding garage in there, I think you're gonna wind up with the same issue that we had with little houses, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna cluster them all in so tight together again. Some of these parts of the land are very small, so I don't know what the answer is.
Building lot is, is. Made for you, your building spot is made for you by the zone, so. Again, with your, your rear yard, rear yard and your side yard dimensions, okay, your building spot is made there. If you're restricted to a thousand square foot, your building spot. Is made smaller. Okay, if it's a one and a half story, you may have a pitched roof like this, so there's a little bonus room up top, a lot of house to, yeah, okay. It's still the height of the, the building, not the. Rooms you put in it, okay, it's the height of the building. If you go to one story only, you go get small ranches or similar to mobile homes, square mobile home, like the mobile home development. Those are, those mobile homes, the double wides are probably over a thousand square foot. They're twenty, forty by fifty. So, so they're, they're, they're over a thousand square foot, those mobile homes. And by doing one story only, you're taking the design. Effort out of the thing, so you're not gonna get all different types of homes, you know, different little designs, from torches, whatever, um, design element, if you do that. You know, so we're trying to beautify it, make it something that someone's happy to own, because they'd rather have it homeownership, because there's pride in ownership. And. The only reason I, I'm stuck on the. Our seven type zoning. My mother owned eight twenty-nine. Berlin Turnpike for forty years. Sold it eight years ago, five hundred fifty thousand dollars, eight years ago. Then someone's gonna buy that five hundred fifty thousand dollar piece of property, put two houses on it, maybe four. And I'll do it, so to motivate the, 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 the climate of the project. You gotta, you gotta be able to build something that, that is pleasing to the eye. And pleasing to. Our younger couples and our elderly couples, because that's our population in our town. We're just going through the, the population thing on our plan of development, and it shows you which populations are, you know, we're all a town. So you gotta put that traction in there, if you wanna sell, the, the older people wanna sell their bigger house, small little thing with no upkeep. Because it could be a little association there that does the, the loans and stuff like that. You know, if you wanna put that into the zone, you could do that little association in there that does the maintenance of the properties, and you don't have to worry about garbage property, because. It's a way, I don't like that word, but association that they have will keep the thing up kept, kept to their, their liking. They won't have the cavers and the, the trucks and all that stuff because of, of the regulations that they put on the property, just like they do on the large developments in town right now. They have deed restrictions on the property, so they could do that.
Ryan, let's go ahead and do a little math for us real quick, I'm like, for the smallest.
One acres, four point six.
Eight eleven is one of the largest, the smallest amount of units that we've done, the R seven, which is two point nine, can you figure out real quick what that would be if we did the R seven?
I believe, uh, Maureen has covered that.
Okay.
So I'm almost all the way through. Eight eleven is the point seven six acres. Our eleven would allow for two point nine units, our seven for four point six units, single family, our seven would, it's four point six. And our, our seven regulations currently allow for two family houses, and so that's five thousand square feet per, per dwelling, and that would allow for. No, I did that calculation wrong, I've gotta do it again, that math is wrong. I wrote that one down wrong, because it says two, which is less.
And then sixteen seventy-six was the one that allowed for the most units, if you could give me that one under R seven. One part, if we could do this, I would say if we chose the R seven guy that would be single only.
I just did the math as the five thousand versus seventy-two hundred per unit, that's what I was trying to utilize, I'm sorry, what was the biggest lot that you found?
Sixteen seventy-six, like for seven point five minutes.
Okay, so our seven, the ten thousand, I mean, the, yeah. Our seven seventy-two hundred square foot per lot is eleven point eight. Five, five thousand per lot is sixteen point nine.
All right, thank you. And just as a, this will all be a special permit.
Yes, it's written, it was always written as a special permit use.
All right, we're still in the public hearing, I know that we have to close this and then we.
So I would wanna note that this is a staff proposed text amendment, and so you don't, aren't subject to the same deadlines for closing the public hearing as you are for.
Yeah, because I would want.
Appropriate proposed amendment.
Yes, that is. Okay, all right, is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the commission regarding this application? Yeah, okay, thank you, come on up.
Riley's still speaking for Linda. Okay, okay, so this is, so I thought she was very happy to have that revisited, and I'm very pleased with that. She did have some, I don't think she thought would be wise to address. She thought the underlying zone is still BT one and then a rear buffer of fifty feet, when a budding residential should remain in place. She also had feelings in the thousand square feet per unit was too large. Maximum height of twenty-five feet. Or a one point five story cape is too high, she owns a one point five story cape elsewhere. The actual height, the actual plan notes that the house is eighteen feet in height. Just got an attached picture here. Yeah, who states that a one point five story unit is twenty-five, twenty feet in height. Revision height of twenty-five feet needs to drop to twenty. The, a full two-story unit, Charles requested that the landscaping and screening requirements be added. Requested the commission add a statement that a developer could have the option of building and selling owner occupied affordable housings on these sites. So, Linda Austria, okay.
Thank you.
I'm not gonna sign it again, I don't need to.
No, I don't think. Yeah, I'm just thinking through some things, and just putting this off. Is, you know, we talked about the difference between rental and homeownership, and I don't know if we want or have the ability to get. Minimal requirements, limitations on rental, I think if we have a turnover, that's very quick, that might pose some problems for homes, their ability to turn every month or turn every week, you can do a rental. If you don't limit the minimum time that people reside in homes, that could be a common issue, so I don't know if that's something to look at. I think at the last meeting, we talked about sheds, and that might be something we look at if they do or have the ability to build sheds, if there's like a maximum size limit that we. May be able to add, I don't know if it's reasonable or not, it just does that. And we talked about basement, no basement. I myself have looked for affordable homes recently, and what homes have, if they don't have basements, it becomes more affordable, because you don't have the basement built, but usually that's a minimal cost of like. I don't know what it is here, but back in Illinois, it was ten thousand for some point, maybe up to twenty or thirty, but. If they eventually get to no basements, it may become more affordable, if we are using either the R seven or R eleven, and we don't fill. They'll say that housing is a six point two or a five point three, you know, one thing we consider asking or looking at. Is if there are no basement homes, if we could put like an onsite storage for people, they don't have basements, so just trying to create some ability for them to. Be affordable and feasible for a smaller space, at least temporarily, you can rent places in town for storage, but maybe have something small onsite, just a cube or something, it's just an idea of. Throwing that out there too, to make it a little more comfortable, so those are just thoughts I have.
Great, thank you, anyone else?
I guess to your point of no basement and the cubes, I think of, we're seeing these projects where he's doing his luxury housing, and it's separate from the apartment buildings, he has. Garages that are combined, like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, the carport that we could, so that would allow us to keep the one thousand square feet with no garage, allow for a carport. Bring one, one point five story, bring it down to twenty feet, I think that's reasonable. And those are just my thoughts for now.
And they can be covered carports and closed carports, a lot of variation.
Okay, well, it sounds like we've got some, it sounds like we're taking some steps in the right way, and you're advising that we're not under pressure to close the public hearing on this.
Right.
That we can leave it open, so we're gonna do some more work on the.
Direction, I'd like to do that, because I'd like to do another track change of this, of what you see in front of you, and actually. And, um, actually, I think before you go into deliberation, it would be beneficial to go through it item by item like we did. When you looked at the amendment in the first place and a lot of the amendments we did last year. Were done as just going through them and making sure that it captured all the changes or concerns you had. I do wanna make a clarification just because I think, um, some of the discussion may have been confusing, particularly to the public. Um, I wanna clarify that any development would be on the single parcel. These aren't or subdivision properties where they're each individual lots. It's one development, one lot and that the, um. Uh, more than three family, three family and more is commercial properties. Those are considered commercial properties. They're subject to fire marshal inspections. Well, these won't be attached, so they won't be. But, um, commercial properties are more than three, three families. So, um, that's. A reminder that that was one of the considerations that it's kind of that link between the business commercial that's on the Berlin Turnpike. And residential buddy uses in backyards. Um, just kind of a reminder of one of the reasons that you've entertained the original amendment.
And can I just, uh, review what we've discussed, I think, is that, uh, I don't, I don't speak for all. But I think we're leaning towards the R seven type zone. And we're talking about storage and stuff for our house, stuff like that. They don't have basements. That's all in our rigs, we're building rigs, uh, sheds or anything else you want to storage it. That's all in our rig. So if, uh, the next time we come, you come back, bring the building code rigs or whatever, what can be built on a single family home, a property. He. I think myself, so one point, uh, one point five, you know, that's only go put the second story on, on there if. Uh, the roof design is going to allow it. Uh, it's a. Ranch, don't have that attic space. You're not gonna have a second story. It could be a, a small cape. Uh, square foot, small cape, you know, get the center, center stairway cap cape. Better set of staircase, uh, or one big bedroom upstairs, uh, depending on, um, you know. The plans that, that you saw there. You know, it does, it does give the architects. A way to. Right enough to develop different style homes, different, uh, you know, everyone. Every house down like condo, every house, same, same thing. There's not pleasingly to me. I, you know, come home drunk, can't find your house because they're all the same. But, uh, uh, you know, just to get that flavor in there, you know, and we can invest, investigate, uh. How that homeownership is. It could be just lot lines. Wrong and it's all common property, but it's land usage lines, not, not. Lot lines, land uses lines. We do have a development in town that is built that way. I haven't seen those on the regulations in a long time, but I know they're, they're there. Uh, so I would think stuff like that would be in favor into that development. Uh, you know, I wanna entice. Single family ownership. Like I said before, you can rent anything you want. As a single family home, I can move out of my home tomorrow, rent. Make more, make more in my mortgage.
I do believe, um, I don't have the regulation, it's hard for me to see, but I do believe this text amendment does allow for. Homeownership, uh, as long as there isn't each away in place. So it's not forbidden.
That was in the original text, so I don't remember the exact wording, but it is an original text that can either be rental or unit ownership. Again, online, one piece of property.
Well, we, we still got a lot of work ahead of us and stuff like that. And I think we're on the right path. So, um, I do know that Maureen is requesting, is requesting that.
I'll make the motion to continue.
All righty. Thank you, Mr. Rogan. And second by Mr. Dorsey for the discussion on this. And then all those in favor, aye, as opposed, so moved. Okay, thank you. And we'll look forward to that, that stuff. All right. So the additional, so now we have an additional event to the special permit use for the Berlin. Alliance Agricultural Fair Incorporated at four ten Beckley Road for a made in Connecticut expo on August twelfth, twenty twenty-three and also on August thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. And, um, oh, Mr. Edg, are you speaking for the applicant tonight?
Yes, I am. I actually have a letter that she wrote that I will, um. Mention to you. Dear Maureen, my name is Jill Perez and the applicant from Made in Connecticut Expo and I hope to hold the Berlin Fairgrounds in Berlin in August of this year. We've held this event a number of years in Nagatuck and in twenty twenty-two, we had over two hundred amazing booths, all from right here in Connecticut, every category, category met. Including the twenty twenty-two expo, food companies, drink companies, hand wrapped products, manufacturers, apparel, fashion designers, artisan artisans, contributors, local authors, doing book signings. Product companies, pet companies, top ornate food trucks, furniture makers, upcyclers and so much more. It is self case, a showcase of Connecticut made product by Connecticut families, the entrepreneurs that make our economy grow. I will be away the week of February thirteenth, which includes a night of February nineteenth, planning its opening. I do not wish to put out a potential approval for her event, so I'm asking permission for someone else to be on my house so it can be heard on February nineteenth. Is okay with your office? I authorize Chris Edge Economic Development Director of the Town of Berlin to speak for. The Economic Development Commission, I can actually support bringing our expert Berlin. If you have any questions on this letter of application, and list her email and cell phone. Thank you very much for understanding and I hope Chris should be able to speak on my half. Sincerely, Jill Perez, Made in CT Expo.
Oh my, I don't think I've ever heard you speak so fast. What'd you have, coffee?
Cherry Coke Zero, actually.
All I know is that, the Berlin Lions. All right, no, no, I, I understood.
Couple of big things, uh, just my thoughts. The Berlin Fairgrounds, as you know, are a wonderful asset. As a community, we use on a very limited basis, but could be huge, much more.
Yeah.
Made in Connecticut event can hopefully bring up Fairgrounds to life for another weekend, potentially more in the future. It is a great spot. We are the geographic center of Connecticut and I think we should look to see at this, the more interesting and diverse events could be held right here at the.
Okay. And I know Maureen, the reason we're seeing this is that normally we give you an illustrative write-off on some of these reoccurring events. And the reason it's before us is because they're, uh, they're expecting quite the crowd, not as big as the Berlin Fair itself, but quite the crowd.
So the regulations calls for any event that, any new event proposed that is expected to have more than two hundred and fifty participants, um, or. People attended, um, um, requires a public hearing to be held. And therefore we noticed this meeting as a public hearing for this item and it is public hearing. Um, and which is required by the regulations and the yearly events are administratively can be approved as we've discussed in the past. But we don't have the yearly events yet anyway.
Okay.
So they are asking for this. Um, on another note, um, just, this is my, my opinion, not my planning opinion. But the Made in Connecticut Expo, I did attend the one last year in Nagatuck and it was a great event. I daily use one of the products I, I got there as well as we got a number of other items. It's my, it's my little thing that holds my cell phone. So it's just, I, I do think that promoting, um, local businesses. Um, not only within the town, but in the area is good for the community and good for the environment.
Now, would this be the type of event that, you know, should the commission give its blessing? Could we going forward specify that this event is a reoccurring item with the Berlin Fairgrounds or the Lions Clubs? That we could just have that as an administrative?
So yeah, that's in the regulation. Any event that, once it's approved, unless there's reason to bring it back, perhaps problems, perhaps some, um, other issue. It then goes on the annual list.
Okay.
Unless it doesn't occur for a number of years and then they have to come back.
Well, there's surely no shortages of space at the fairgrounds, that's for sure. And they have ample parking. And I'm sure that they'll take care of directing traffic, uh, through the Lions Club. It's great membership.
I gotta tell you, I went to the, my wife dragged me to it last year in Nagatuck. It's a great event. I think it's a great event. I just don't like the money my wife spent.
Well, people, well, take her on a trip out of town during this one.
This one's gonna be too low.
I just wanna add our interdepartmental comments. So any food vendors and food trucks would require the fire marshal as well as the health district food, um, tents.
We have to taste the stuff.
They did have a lot of food items and as I recall.
Commission pre-vent testing?
Yes.
And that, those, you know, permits, permitting, proper permitting through health and building department and fire marshal.
All right. Okay, commissioner.
Which they're aware of. They've been discussed with them already.
This is public hearing. Anyone from the public wants to just.
Yep. So this is, uh, Joseph Dornfried, uh, from the Berlin Lions Agricultural Fair. Just wanna let you know that we. That we've had a, uh, we've had a, uh, event like this about a decade ago. It's not like this, but we used to have craft fairs at the fairgrounds. So this is not unheard of. It's just we haven't had it a number of years and, uh, this has been approved by the board, subject to, the, the, our board, subject to your approval in terms of. You know, the zoning authorization. So just wanna let you know that Bron Lions, uh, fair has already approved this pending this, uh, uh, public hearing and then the outcome of the board's decision.
I like that, Mr. Dornfried. Are they, uh, I mean, they said food trucks, I sort of heard that. Uh, are they. Entertaining that the nonprofit organization that moves there to open up for this or?
That, that hasn't been, uh, discussed with, with, uh, the promoter.
I, I was gonna ask if there's gonna be beer and wine for company.
Yeah, yeah, there's no, uh, we're not allowing the sale of alcohol. That's, that's, yeah.
All right. All right. Anyone else for attorney Dornfried?
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we have a motion by Mr. Rogan and second goes to Ms. Miller for the discussion. And all those in favor, aye, as opposed, so moved. All righty, um, we'll be right back with you. Okay, application of Tony Valente, which is the next up for the Newport Realty Group LLC for text amendment to the Berlin zoning regulations HF three A. Village Core Area One relating to street level uses, street level. Now you tick my curiosity, street level uses. I know it's into walking and biking or, okay. Well, the floor is yours. I can't wait.
I need the man of chair and commissioners. My name's Tony Valente, Principal of Newport Realty Group, seven ten Main Street, Plant School, Connecticut. Here with me tonight is Mark Lovely, my business partner, also Principal of Newport Realty Group, Brandon Hanfield from Yantagiver Consultants, who's our civilian near insight. We have a construction foreman for the Berlin development, Thomas Valenti here as well.
Okay, before you cut in, can we have you move the board a little bit so we can see what's on there? I don't know. Ah, there we go. Okay, got it, got it, got it. Oh. Yeah, better than more and all right, true.
Would you like me to read the text amendment that we're trying to get to and kind of work that, read that and work backwards from that? That would be appropriate.
Fine, whatever works.
I think what I'll say after this maybe makes more sense to kind of tie it together. Text amendment is regarding section eight, F three A Village Core Area One. Mixed use developments containing retail stores, restaurants, businesses and professional offices and other businesses and residential uses. Mixed use development, business and residential uses provided that, number one, only businesses, only businesses use, only business uses. Shall be located at street level in any building located within seventy-five feet of Farmington Avenue. Two, residential, residential uses cannot be located at street level along the public way unless in a building located more than seventy-five feet from Farmington Avenue. Just for a point of reference on our map, again, this is the Steel Center Development. You see the purple hash line that, that'll identify the seventy-five foot line from Farmington Avenue. And, and the focus building that we're talking about tonight is. Yeah, thank you. It's building D and E, which is gonna be top left or to your north, northwest of the, of the development. It was involved in by the development recently. You see nine steel, the building in the front is completed, fully occupied except for about eleven hundred fifty square feet. So, you know, we're, we're, we're looking to continue to proceed with the development, building, building A, and then of course building D and E along, as long as we get support from the commission tonight. So what, you know, why are we asking for this text amendment? Just a quick background, um, the site work that we're gonna do Newport Realty Group is gonna be done, um, in, in concert. And implemented along with the town's work at fifty-five Steel Boulevard, building's D and E. For the environmental remediation of that property. Remember, it's a brownfields property. And the improvements that we're gonna make at the property, along with the town are gonna include working utilities, footings, foundations. And everything kind of below the engineered control variance, fancy word for, we're gonna tap the site with a rubber membrane. To help contain environmental matters that affect that site. Um, so let's just keep that in mind as we ask, what we're gonna be asking for going forward. You know, as the town bids for remediation work, you know, we also solicited bids because we didn't wanna waste any time understanding, you know, where our costs were gonna be for site work, construction, et cetera. Due to rising costs, the bids came in much higher than we anticipated initially, not just our bids, but also the town's bids for, for the remediation. I, I do know that Jim Mahoney and team are rebidding some of that work as we speak today. Therefore, the economic feasibility and viability of the project has been challenged. The building being a, you know, by the rising cost of construction and by the rising cost of interest, of the cost of money today. So we got our heads together and from a design perspective, you know, we thought the best way to continue to advance this project was gonna be to amend the project's design. To kind of make it work better on the site. Um, so what we did is reduced, we reduced the scope of the building. It ballooned to eighty-three thousand five hundred square feet on that site, again, building D and E. It's a multi-filled, multifamily building, originally called out for sixty apartment units. Our thoughts today are our plan, our proposed plan today is to, to reduce that building to a more efficient three-story, forty-seven thousand square foot building. And just a quick step, now that fifty apartment units in it and a quick step backwards, our first property is four stories, as I maybe said earlier, was parking at grade under the building. That became very, very expensive to construct and another reason why that building ballooned, for lack of better terms, to almost eighty-four thousand square feet. Again, the new building, forty, forty-seven thousand square feet, three stories, probably a much more appropriate sized building to fit on our Steel Center Development. And then again, it will offer fifty apartment units versus the sixty that we originally had planned. So to move forward on fifty-five Steel Boulevard or Buildings D and E, um, and, and based on our amended plans. We're gonna need, need to secure a zoning text amendment from the commission. To allow us to permit residences and residences in the first floor of Buildings D and E in the core area of one. And again, I described now where we were on that, so where we are on the, on the map.
So you'd be getting rid of the parking underneath the building?
The building, yeah, the building will basically be dropped at grade. Um, actually, it's more efficient to help the town enter and work with remediation in that building. So it really works for us in a couple of different aspects, not just the financial aspect, but even to get the, the brownfields kept how they have to be.
Where's the parking going?
Parking will be, or as you can. See building D and E again, the northwest side of the property. There's, there's parking all, all around that building. To the northwest, to the south of the building. Um, we, we still have, I think we're at a hundred, hundred fifty, almost a hundred sixty spaces for the entire development. So ample parking for what we have, um, what we have being developed there.
But that's including the businesses. I mean, you've got the, you have businesses, so you're gonna have cars coming and going. Is there gonna be a designated area for the residential? Uh, will they, will they have designated, uh, spots that they, they'll use for their cars?
Nothing designated at this point. There's a lot of logic with our site plan. So for example, everything adjacent to building D and E, it's only, it's almost separated from the rest of the development. everything adjacent to building D and E, it's only, it's almost separated from the rest of the development where, where our residential tenants will park in front of that building and you see a small parking area. I can't see it. I guess I can look down here.
Yeah.
Nice spaces to the, to the north, northwest as well.
Yeah, I guess my concern is that, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but you, you're, you're kind of have the hop house in there.
Yeah.
And that's going to be a pretty sizable restaurant. So you'll have people coming, you know, late afternoon and early evening to enjoy themselves. And we hope that they do. But my concern is that the parking that you have for the residential, they're going to come home from work and they're going to end up parking across the street or at the train station or something. I'm just afraid that your residents won't have an area to park because as you get successful and things start to percolate over there, you're not going to have the parking.
So this is a text amendment, though, not a site plan amendment. So we should, but I considering the specific site.
So to clarify on the agenda, the item, I'm sorry, I missed the item number. E is the text amendment application to allow residential uses on the first floor, basically. Details of that in a minute. And then item F will be the site plan modifications and site plan and special permit modification.
Oh.
So there are two different items.
No, we can further discuss that with any suggestions the commission may have to help us kind of get there. And I'll, I'll reserve my comments to the next agenda item too, if I could.
Could we combine these, like we've done with other applications, do we combine site plan and?
You know, I, I, I do typically discourage that, to be honest with you, because I do exactly for the reason that Commissioner George raised, is that you've got to, you've really got to isolate that text amendment from the particular project, knowing that it's going to apply all over town.
Well, I think that's my next, my next point is that if we have to look at this as a text amendment only, and I have to now, or we have to now consider it's going to impact that whole core. Now are we working against ourselves?
So it is a text amendment specifically for Core Area One, which is the north side of Farmington Avenue in that area. So it is a fairly specific portion of the regulations that this text amendment applies to. However, I would encourage the thought process to, you know, be open-minded that you have Core Area Two across the street. And a lot of times this, as we may see development in the future, some of the same thoughts may percolate. So although this is specifically for Core Area One, north of Farmington.
All right. So where is Core Area One? Is it only this development?
Basically, I believe so.
Basically, you're right.
Okay.
It includes over the tavern on the tracks and the train station. You know, it includes to the east, to the limit of this property.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm not just.
Seventy-five DLOs for a lot of residential, like ground level.
But as a reminder, it's only in the Core One area, which is that, that area that I'm already identifying, just from Steel Center to the west, the tavern on track.
Can't let anyone change course.
It doesn't apply anything else without your consideration of another amendment.
And so as we deal with the P O C D and expanding Core Areas or adjusting other Core Areas of future development of.
Just get let that happen.
Yeah.
Diane? It's a small enough area. I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to what's being proposed. I want the project to succeed.
Well, yeah, no, I, I agree, but I also want to protect ourselves so that we don't end up in another problem. So that's, that's my big thing. I have no, I have no objection to what's being proposed. I just want to make sure that we don't create problems down the road for ourselves and back ourselves into a corner.
I would question, I would question that. Just that the Core Area One is really a specific area, mostly taking up this development. There is some other buildings and stuff that would be affected by the, the text amendment. But when you go to this small of an area with a zoning amendment, is it spot zoning? Because you are changing the zone for that, basically that big, big unit. And I don't want to, I don't want to discourage building these, these units at all. But, but I'm, I'm wondering how it's worded, is it, does it get into the spot zoning?
That's.
So.
That's a question.
I would not think so.
I think it does get into the spot zoning.
Because that is the core area, which is a very defined area that's already listed in the zoning regulations as part of the village district. And the village district has been divided into these specific cores. So that core has dedicated regulations to it. Each area, Core Area One has dedicated regulations, Core Area Two has dedicated regulations. So the regulation itself is set as a perimeter from, in a distance from the train station.
So we can't remove our course.
Well, that's a question, that's a question, my, my take if you do this, Core Area One.
So you'll see here that the dark.
Doesn't concern the Core Area Two across the street. Across the street is going to say, hey, why can't I, go like across the street over there? And that's my question is.
That means they have to come for a zone check.
They have to come back and throw a zone check, but they got a good, a pointing. Say, hey, you did it across the street. Why can't I do it on this side of the street? That's just only rainbow or brown circles here. And, and if, if it expanded the zone, expanded it up five, then it's a, the brick road or something as a text amendment, that wouldn't be spot zoning to me.
Could we, could we just, I, I know what, let me just pop before I forget this. Could we somehow designate? And I just lost it. Oh, this is, he had mentioned before that this is a brown field, right? So.
We're, we're building D and E, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Is across the street also a brown field or is this the only one or brown, what are the parts of it?
Or the construction firehouse area and stuff like.
We, I, I don't know if any of those areas.
The other thing is, is you might be able to make that position or, or amendment because it is a brown field area and that. So is this way if somebody else came in for another change, we won't be able to see that. We don't have the same.
This may or may not be on point.
Yeah.
Okay. So I just, some of the thoughts I had with regard to this. Um, the way the regulation is currently written, provision one, which is the first portion within where they're adding, in any building located within seventy-five feet of Farmington Avenue, currently says only business users shall be located at street level along the public way. So you're seventy-five feet because of Steel Boulevard. This development is now, the core area now has an additional public way. Where, when you thought about the development, when it was first proposed, that while that public way was proposed as part of the development, it was not yet built. It wasn't, it's not an area that was thought about when the core area was, or it was thought about, we were hoping for the Boulevard. But it said along the public way and some of the interpretation, and there was some confusion, I recall some conversation about that being within Farmington Avenue or not at the time that some of the other things were looked at. When you did the settlement agreement with eight seventy-three, you, the discussion was also included there and allowed a residential unit on the backside of the proposed building at eight seventy-three to be a handicapped unit on the ground level. And there was some discussion during that with regard to what the intent for ground level commercial uses was. So I just kind of wanted to get the juices flowing on that a little bit. And I think that was about it. I do need some clarification from the applicant with regard to the regulation and kind of want to wordsmith a little bit. So again, number one says only, only business uses shall be located at street level along the public way. I believe the intent of their change is to change that provision from without, take out the along public way completely and put only business uses, uses shall be located at street level on any building located within Farmington Avenue, within seventy-five feet of Farmington Avenue. So that's pretty clear. Two is residential uses cannot be located at street level along the public way unless a building located more than seventy-five feet from Farmington Avenue. Number three is the one that says residential uses shall not be located at street level. Level two, I mean, number two says retail or restaurant uses shall only be located at street level along the public way or with approval by the commission below street level or off the public way. So I think the intent is to change number three from residential dwelling units shall not be located at street level to residential units cannot be located at street level along the public way unless the building is located more. So it should be number three, not number two. Is that correct? Are you following me?
That's true, because I, I don't think I did.
Language, just, just kind of heads up, the, the, the language was written in concert with, with, with some members of the town.
Yeah, I didn't catch it.
No, 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 no beat up. There was, there was a handful less involved in writing, including me. So, so there's a better way to clarify it. We're, we're, we're fine with that. And one more point too, Steel Center Development is considered a transit-oriented development. You know, and that, that, that brought a lot of attention from state with brownfield cleanup dollars and a variety of other things to help us get the project launched. So I guess if we're looking for suspens- specificity, specificity.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Some specifics regarding the site. T O D or transit-oriented development site as well. That's something that we'd want to entertain. That would really narrow it down. And I think, Commissioner Zigna, that, that would address any issue, I think, of spot zoning, I think.
Well, yeah.
Because there's no, there's no more T O Ds in town.
T O D, yes, I, I understand that. It does, by allowing residential first floor, it does take the flavor of the development away a little bit because we were building commercial first floor, retail, commercial, whatever.
There's only going to be parking under there. The commercial, I'm sorry, the commercial still.
Only, only in two front blocks.
Yeah, this is the, this is the residential one.
I'm, my mind, I'm, I'm a little concerned and I don't, I'm not a scientist or anything, environmental person. But when you build on top of brownfields, I know it's going to be capped. That, which wouldn't residential against the soil. I don't know. I don't know if that's a, a, a problem or not. When you're raising it up, got airflow across, you've got residential above. Is, is it, is it a concern? And I'm just bringing it up. Is it a concern? And I don't know if it is, probably, probably with the cap and then maybe not because that's why, that's why they're capping it, but you know, you know, it, it, it comes into my mind a big project down in, just before Bridget Strapper, that they did this capital, this huge piece of property and then put retail in it, had some, some single family residential in it. And now that subject has cleared up.
Well, I, I'm sure that the technology or whatever was changed and improved with the lessons learned. Because I'm sure that I would want to be a developer, developing, developing on contaminated soil without the proper, go ahead, that, you know, they got the most up-to-date, nothing kind of stuff there. But I, I'm sorry to your point.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mark Lovely, Principal with Newport Realty's Office of 710 Main Street, Plantville, Connecticut. The building design is, the way it's designed is to be elevated a little bit higher than it was before with the parking underneath. So that what happens is that we can put in a, the ventilation system under it with some extra fill with the liner so that we don't have those issues. And D P has already looked at that and approved that concept to be done.
Oh, so it's not going to be just.
My concern.
And just to be, be honest with you, what happens is what we're looking at was, this building was always a sort, for sore eyes, a lot of times when we were trying to do this development with the commission, if we remember correct, this building was going to sit up about sixteen feet taller with the parking garage under it. This will bring this building with D and E more in harmony with the development where it's not going to be a sore bump for Farmington Avenue, overpowering everything else. So that's why we're looking. And that was one of the ideas when we got the cost and that's one, we started working with the town with the cost of the remediation, remediation with all the pylons and everything we needed to do to support the parking underneath. And what ended up happening, the width of the building ended up getting larger because you had of your driveway and your parking on each side underneath it. So the building actually got larger. It ballooned it up to eighty-five thousand square feet, where now we're about forty-seven thousand square feet. And I'll get into the parking on the next agenda item, but we, we have an idea of exactly what we're doing there for that too.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, I guess my only hesitation comes from the fact that this is a text amendment that we're considering and seventy-five feet and residential on the first floor is still a concern for me. I agree that having a building smaller is probably, I mean, smaller buildings are probably a good thing. I mean, I have certain people concerned with heights and what's happening on Farmington Avenue.
And if I just.
I wish it was, there was something more eloquent where we could write into the text amendment.
Yeah, I know, we worked with staff and that's what we came up with. But the funniest thing is, if you think about it, it's, it could actually, with building A and B, where both of those will have retailer office on the first floor. Building C will actually have a, will have either a commercial or a restaurant on the first floor. So it's really only back where building D and E is in this whole core. So it really doesn't affect eight seventy-three, eight sixty-one, which we own, or Tavern on a Track because they will be doing it. So it's really for, for this one, Core One zone for building D and E. If there was another way to do it, we would entertain it. We're just trying to get to drop the parking off because what happens, the parking was what we used as a commercial use to be able to do that building in the past. And I don't think it was ever thought of then of that building being backed that far, on which way to write it.
I also believe that people knew that construction costs were going to be as bad as.
No, no.
All right.
I, I did ask Jim to hop on because he's our resident brownfields expert.
Yeah.
Um, and just in case there's any questions that come up.
Good evening, Mr. Mahoney. I think Mr. Zigna is concerned that, Tim, you want to address your issue regarding the brown, you know, or?
Well, there, there was two issues. One, one was the, I'm sorry, I'm on my cut. There was two issues. One was, is it just Core One? Are we spot zoning the area? Are we spot zoning, uh, the area? And. A question. I'm not that concerned about the first floor residential. If there's go-to-air rate underneath the building, so, uh, that concern is gone. Does it affect any of the other properties? Down Farmington, you basically elected this project. When you're using that seventy-five foot line. You know, any of those properties. Getting affected by the. On usage.
Are you talking about the? Yeah, so you're talking about the seventy-five foot setback from Farmington Avenue.
Does it eliminate any? Uses or help the other properties or? Eliminate some, some uses from the other department, uh, properties?
Going, going off, can I ask? Why seventy-five feet? Could it be, I don't know, a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and fifty? So that we ever did decide to expand some, we can guarantee that all buildings along Farmington Avenue have that commercial. You know, aspect.
Can I make a suggestion to the commission? I guess I probably wouldn't try to. Yes, I probably would try to pigeonhole that decision tonight to at least. There, there may be better opportunities on Farmington Avenue where this same thing can be, this same type of text amendment could be applied to. Which you'll have the opportunity to take a bite of that apple if that ever comes in front of you.
I wanna see that.
But, but I, so I'm not sure I would, I would go too much further back than seventy-five feet because. Um, I, I think it pigeonholes the commission for future opportunities. And, and again, I'm gonna kind of go back to this, this TOD, this transit oriented development is very specific, you know, for this request that we're. Respectfully requesting tonight.
I, we, we all had conversations about the seventy-five feet, um, how exactly we landed there. Is somewhat of a blur. However, there was some discussion about the taking out the along, along the public way. And putting in a defined distance, so where you may have buildings that are along Farmington Avenue. And something could potentially be behind it or coming from under it. In another way for residential units and, and I'll throw out again, and I don't actually think it meets the seventy-five, but. The new building at eight seventy-three where the handicap unit will be in the back, it's not along the public way. But it's, and so taking out the wording that said along the public way, the seventy-five feet was a way to. Balance against that. Do you understand what I mean?
And, and Maureen also, this goes back a while, but we're writing this. Originally talked about having that seventy-five foot line commence at a, uh, uh, yeah. What word do we use? Not street, but a, but a. Yeah, originally we're gonna focus and just use Steel Boulevard, but that, that didn't work because. D and E are adjacent to and almost connected to, you know, Steel Boulevard, so we couldn't, we couldn't write the amendment that way. We actually, we had to use as a point of reference Farmington Avenue.
Take out the, the public way because Steel Boulevard is public way. As I said at the beginning, and so the seventy-five feet was a way to mitigate it. It was balancing and.
Okay.
The best we came up with.
Can I ask a silly question? Why are we not doing this as like a site plan amendment versus text amendment?
Because the regulation calls for no residential uses along the public way. And their proposal eliminates on, on the first floor. Eliminates the first floor parking garage. The first floor residential uses on building D and E was on the second floor. Because the garage was the first floor. So by them dropping it, your residential uses are now on the first floor and the regulation doesn't allow for that. The way the regulation is currently written, it says no residential uses along the public way.
So, but we couldn't do that as a site man.
They need the language to back up the site plan, which is coming as the next application, is the site plan and special permit amendment application.
Okay, I'm just trying to find a way out.
By, there's a, there's a prohibition that they have to deal with. There's a prohibition in the reg. That they can't do what they wanna do, so they gotta eliminate the prohibition. Be a text amendment and then present this identification.
Is it something that could be addressed through ZBIA?
Well. Because I am a strict constructionalist, I will say no, because that is the hardship. What is the exceptional difficulty? The brown usual hardship arising from the property itself.
That's more story building and. Construction prices and.
Can't be, can't be financial.
I, I was just trying to find a way that we could do this without impacting. Yeah, something else. Oh, my God.
Well, I think we have to, Mark Lovely, I think we have to remember that this is only the core area one, so. Anything that comes in, whether it's gonna be east or west on, uh, Farmington Avenue. That's gonna come into a separate zone unless you keep extending out the core one depending on what you do with your plan of development. So it's, it's not really spot zoning, it's, it's working within this core to change the regulation in the core.
We're not looking to. You're changing the use.
Yes, exactly.
What you're doing, you're making a change of use. Mr. Mahoney, do you have any comments? While you're online, so you're kind enough to join us and I don't know if. There's anything you wanna share with us?
Well, I'm, I guess I missed the beginning, obviously, the, um, you know, the big picture, well, when we get to the site plan, the benefits. Of this are that, you know, we keep the project going forward and, you know, it was sixty units, now it becomes fifty units. So I think, you know, we've talked to the commission about you're having some concerns about the density, so that seemed to be a positive. And, um, you know, there might be different ways to imagine it, but I, 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 I agree with Mr. Lovely that. Basically, this amendment, you know, just applies in the core area one, so really there. I don't think there's any other property that would, anything would change, you know, there's no other property that would be able to do. First floor, uh, you know, apartments along Farmington Avenue was a result of this amendment. And, you know, this is the only, you know, the only remaining property on Steel Boulevard, so it really. It becomes a unique situation and I think, you know, that, again, it doesn't. I think we tried to construct it so it doesn't spill over to other properties. I think we've succeeded in doing that and that the overall. Impact is positive and, and obviously, you know, we could talk about brownfields, but. This project is being done in coordination with the brownfields redevelopment or the brownfields, you know, cleanup of the site, so we're doing. Capping of the contaminated soils and this has to be done in, in conjunction with the site plan with the, uh. With the, um, with the specific building because they're doing the, um. They're doing the, the foundations and footings and utilities under the liner that we're gonna be constructing there. So, um, you know, it's, it's, um. Positive that we go forward, you know, we've been working on this obviously for a lot of years in terms of doing the environmental cleanup. So we're finally at that point and, you know, obviously the, unfortunately, the market conditions. You know, with the rising cost of the building and interest rates and stuff is. Have precluded the sixty-unit building now, but like, you know, so we were encouraged that by the fact that Newport came forward with, uh. A revised plan that they can keep on going forward and a, you know, and, and largely accomplish the same thing. But again, it, it does, it was essential that for, for the economics of the project that they eliminate the, the parking, so, um, again. I think it doesn't have a spillover effect. I think it works and, um, you know. And, and it is important that we kind of finish the cleanup. It, it is, uh. You know, the property the town has owned for, for a number of years and, um, we, we finally got to this point, so we'd like to, uh. Get the cleanup done, get the building done and, and move on.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Um, all right, well, Mr. Edge.
A, a couple of things. One, um, town actually still owns this property. It ain't that, so we're actually making a zone change on our own parcel. They will be purchasing it first. Secondly, um, we had, and we being the group, Jim, Maureen, myself, town manager. A lot of folks had put into it, because we wanna make this work. The good news is the query one is so very different from query two. Query two, I wanna say, and you can correct me, uh, Maureen and Dylan, maybe is a density of either four or six per acre. Where this one is about twenty-six, thank you, where this one specific is to the TOD project. And really does not affect anything and I don't see any reason why we want to expand this core one. Because essentially the reason we did this is because we, and we being the town and Newport Realty Group. Had control over what we're doing because we're working in partnership, that this is not something where we've not extended out because. I don't know about you guys, uh, I don't wanna see anything this dense elsewhere because it doesn't fit anywhere else. Um, seventy-five feet, I think, is, is a nice middle ground at this point. Could it be further? Yes. But I think, uh, this gives them ability to do what they want and also it helps them financially because I'd hate to see a wonderful project. Not get completed because of costs and, and that's again. It, it's, as our wonderful attorney had said, it's not a ZBIA thing, but it's a reality. And, and I, I think that they worked very hard with us throughout the process and, um. I, I know Economic Development Commission had asked some questions as well and they felt good the fact that it'd gone through everything from. Town manager and all the different staff members, including Jim and Newport, the fact we were closely defined, but seem to make the most sense. Uh, not perfect, but makes most sense for what they're trying to do.
All right, terrific. Anything else? Maureen?
My vision, uh, downtown, this is not the only vision of downtown, this one piece of property, it's a great. Vision there, it's a great, uh. Thing for the TODs, uh, but I see a division going across the street. Firehouse. Called Grand Union Met. But, uh. You know, I, I see it going across. There's some good sized pieces across the road. Some acres of, of firehouse property.
But it would be, it would be a zone change, but.
So I'm just seeing what the. Future look of this downtown. Is, and I think that's a great start for what we have there. Uh, and, and, uh. The concern about the first story of living, so that's been addressed. Uh, so I don't think, I, I question the seventy-five foot line, but I guess that could be changed again anytime, but. Overall, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, can I just point out just for anybody looking at this tape that we did a really rudimentary job of. Coloring in the core area one, so that's what the purple blob is. Maybe, yeah, it wasn't in the go, actually, it came up as in the go on the, on the drawing sheet. But you'll recall a couple of years ago, the core area was very limited and then it extended to. The area that's now ten steals and the right side of Steel Boulevard, so that's what that block is.
Okay, the block, okay, Jim, I'm just quickly, um, yeah, it's not exactly what we started with, but it is. Is the reality that caused, and so it sounds to me like a good new direction and, um. My thoughts are that they have more to share. I'd love to hear what they have more to share about. Some of the changes that we have a, a more full understanding of some of those things that they went through. We're, we're still in the text and that's a part of it, so just have to make sure.
Let me make one last comment. One more part of my notes. There was no comments from staff with the town. The only thing that was attached was from the Economic Development Commission in town and they, you know, they supported. And our proposed text amendment, just wanna make sure we make that part of the record. It's really important to us that, that we got that.
All right, terrific. So we're in the public hearing and, uh, so. I guess that somebody have a notion to make a motion.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion called public hearing, we have a second, second by Mr. Zigma. Further discussion, all this in favor, uh, those are supposed to move. Okay, so now we move on to the last. Special permit site plan application of Tony Valencia, Newport Realty Group LLC for modifications, we approved mixed. Use TOD development within the Kensington overlay. Which is a bill of course of structures and related site improvements at fifty-five Steel Boulevard, okay, so.
But I haven't getting that in chair, Mark Lovely, member of the people really group, Office of Seventeen Ten Main Street again, Princeville, Connecticut. Um, if we look up at the map with buildings D and E, that's the main, um, area that we are looking at changing and what we did. Um, buildings D and E had parking underneath it and what we did is we cut back the section of building E. To put that finger of parking out behind that, so that's pretty much how we gained that and just redesigned the parking a little bit where the parking. Uh, facing right up against the building is there, there wasn't there to, uh, before. And, um, so a little bit of parking over near, um, the D building and then up against. The upper area because we didn't have the drive to, because before you used to be able to drive through the building and drive it back. So we have guest parking that could come into the vestibule, which would be up on the northwest side of the property. The building itself right now has about five extra spaces that are needed for the amount of units that are there for the regulation, so we have extra parking. We wanted to keep that onto the site. I know there's a comment about house building, uh, B. Um, and building A. Nice thing about what we did do is, uh, we're concentrating ourselves. To have that restaurant there in building B and no other restaurants, so what we end up having is we have commercial. We have a lawyer's office space, we have a healthcare company, uh, that works from, uh, in morning to the afternoon. And then our next base, we're working on that type, same type of product, same thing over at A, a building A, which is ten steel. We only have a four apartments in that building and we'll have some retail downstairs, but if you look at that loop of the building all the way around there, there's parking to the north. There's parking to the east, that's our overflow parking for at nighttime for the restaurant when the restaurant's busy. And even like right now, when we end up getting house open, when we're under construction for ten steel, we're actually gonna make a temporary lot out there for them to be able to park. Because we know when they first open that they're gonna be very busy, so we've actually thought that out ahead of time and, um, already been working with our tenant house to. Um, offset that. We do have the parking for employees in the back of, of nine steel, which is to the west and we have a parking along the street. Um, that you'll see all the way up Steel Boulevard all the way around, it'll accommodate the restaurant as well. So we have very well thought out this plan and there are extra spots on the, uh, per the regulations. That are built into this plan to be able to accommodate that.
So, for all the commercial uses and for all the residential, you were saying, per regulation combined, there is extra part.
There is extra parking, yes, we are, so we're over the regulations for parking. We wanted to do that, we wanted to give it to you extra spaces, so that's why we did do that. And, and if you look at where we have, um, that parking over by building D and E. You will see that what happens is that we have, um, some parking up there, that will be dedicated pretty much to building D and E. So we won't have restaurant parking in there and we'll put signage up for restaurants, uh, for residents in that area too. Because we wouldn't want overflow back in those buildings where residents are parking, so we wanna keep the house parking within ten steel and within the Boulevard.
And in building D and E, um, you went from how many residential down?
Would the fifty residents, I mean sixty residents down to fifty. A total of three studios, eleven, um, two bedrooms and thirty-seven, uh, thirty-seven, um. Thirty-six one bedrooms. And if you wanna, wanna show it to, we showed the two elevations of the building. And you'll see how much more the new building is in. And you'll see how much more the new building is in harmony with the development. To show the first one, pretend it has the parking garage underneath. That one there is the park. Nope, that was a new one. That's a new one.
So one thing I noticed right off the bat is that in the original one, there was supposed to be a clock tower.
Nope, they made us take the clock tower out from day one. Yep. So this was the reality. Brian Humes in the architectural design had us take it out. Because we've met architectural design. This was the design for, with the parking underneath. It was a final design that we ended up coming out with, working with Brian Humes, which is your architect that does the town staff reviews. And then this being the new building, which looks more within. So this is the exact same tower. These are all the exact same peaks. Exact same black studs. I know, we still have the room to put the clock up in here, but that was one of the comments.
What is there? Who's you?
Yeah, that was a nice.
It was a nice, it was a nice.
We have no problem. We have no problem putting it up there. Look, we had the big, the big nine skills we put up in the other one.
Yeah, because it kind of.
Yeah, yeah, unfortunately, that got taken out in part of that design.
No.
So we had the design consultant review the two architects, their architect and the village consultant, which is Brian Humes.
I have a letter.
You have the letter? Okay, I was looking for the letter. They, that was done early on in the project during the architectural review, as well as where some, like, details on building B. Or I think they were awnings or something else that was removed because they didn't fit with the style of architecture. So those were all, you, you saw that being done back a couple of years ago. But it was probably twenty nineteen, is my guess.
Yeah, and this new plan has gone through Brian as well. And he has, he had us make some comments. We did make the changes. Got them back into him and he has approved the new plan. I mean, I really think the clock towers, like, architectural, it's, it's, it's sharp.
I thought, I liked it. Yeah, put it back here.
Put it back in. Tell the commission.
Yeah. Yeah, it was, it was because it was a nice add to it.
No, but I really think too is that.
They put in shutters or anything on those windows, do they?
They don't, they have, they have moldings around them. Some have four inch moldings, some have shutters. So if you look, he switched them up where he wanted some to have shutters and then the other ones don't. So they're, they're messed up. They're mixed up. So. No, so what happens is this section has shutters. These have four inch moldings around them. So he, he actually had us, it will look more like, same thing, almost like nine steel. It's at the same type of architecture. But we feel in harmony, if you look at how tall that building is, compared to this building, more fits in with the development. And I know that was a big point when we were originally getting this approved, was the height of this building. And it was, it's actually going to be about sixteen feet lower, because that's what the height of the parking garage was. So it helped out a lot.
Did we lose any affordable units?
Nope, we still have the one affordable units. When we put the apartments over ten steel, we asked for an affordable unit, and that is going in this.
All right, is there any? There's only one affordable?
This one, yep.
So when the, when the original site plan came in, affordable was not a priority at that time. Nor, and I think it was actually an issue with some of the comments. I don't recall that public hearing deliberately. But it wasn't included in the original proposal when they came in for the modification to ten steel, which is the building on the right side of Steel Boulevard, the east side. And they were adding residential units. So the commission asked for affordable to be added and came up with the one unit, but it would be added in this building instead of at ten steel, where they only have four units. So, so that's where the affordable came in.
The other reason there was no affordable, because it was written right in our contract, that what happens is upon the purchase of this, we couldn't do any. It was part of the approvals that we went through.
All right, I'll stand by that.
We'll go, we'll work on another one.
Hey, now. All right, okay. Questions? Anyone? I mean, they seem to have addressed it, except for that clock tower. We have to get real good.
Right, you are.
What? A steel beam? Electricity. No, we got a nice little clock tower. It looks, it looks pretty in the windows anyway. Any, anyone else on this item? Okay, so I don't see any, it's a public hearing. So anyone here for the public? No, okay. Let's go ahead and make a motion to close the public hearing. All right, thank you. Ms. George, she has the motion. Who has seconds? Second by Mr. Hamel. Further discussion, all those in favor. I, those opposed and moved. Okay, let's go to the old business. Well, we have the Berlin term fine thing, but that has been, that's off to March. Where, where are we going? March third or something? That's off to the next week. March second. Okay. So we're not even going to talk about that. A special permit, March second again. That was for Linda Sukeyson.
Sukeyson.
Yes, thank you for the accessory drawing. For the proposal amendment to abolish the Berlin zoning regulations for the residential infill development.
Close the public hearing, but I'm going to make the motion that we continue it until we finish our other public hearing for the amendment.
Okay, all right. So it's closed. We have a deliberation session. That's the motion that you're making, Mr. Roken. Yeah, so deliberations should be postponed to the next.
Yes, until we finish our public hearing, I think, on the text amendment.
Well, I, I, I suggest that you not do that. Because as we indicated, I mean, you, you have the benefit of it being commission initiated. Next amendment. So you, if you're going to continue the deliberation, you need to continue to date certain. And I do suggest that it be your next meeting. Okay, and that's for the abolishment? For the repeal of, yes.
Yes.
Well, okay, abolishment. All right, it's the petition says.
So you're recommending that I give it a date, or you're recommending that we?
I, I always recommend that you give it a date, because under Robert's rules, that is what you're to do when you continue anything.
Then I will, March second is our next meeting.
Okay.
I will make the motion that we continue the deliberation of this whole business till March second.
Okay, we have the motion to.
For the abolishment of the.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have, whoever's. Okay, so the dates March second. Just, just one comment to, that you can't, in considering one application, consider evidence taken in in the public hearing of another application. I just caution you about that. I know that you know, but. But you need, again, just a reminder. So we have a second by, all right, let's move, wait, we have the motion, so. All right, Ms. George, so now we're in discussion.
So I just want to make sure we're doing everything right.
Well, that's it. That's it. So I don't know if it's better just to take this independent and deliberate an end to it now.
Yeah. I know we've been balancing the two in the past.
Yeah.
So that's why I was going with that route.
Yes. Is that? Deliberate tonight. Okay. All right, so let's deliberate on it, because we, we have the motion.
I withdraw my.
Yeah, withdraw the motion. Let's draw the second one. All right, so now we're just going to deliberate this thing to.
I'll make the motion to, I guess, this.
Boy.
Proposal to abolish.
If you could, Mr. Zigma.
I'm sorry.
Voice up, because we have to think.
I'm sorry, I compress the voice. I'm sorry. Okay, I think a motion to deny the application to abolish the zoning regulations, item B.
I'll second the motion. Okay, that was on item C. Not wearing your glasses, Tim. All right, that's item C. So we have a motion to deny the request to abolish the zoning regulation, section eleven DD. And so we have a second by Ms. George. Do we have further discussion on that? Oh, yes. Go ahead. So I think it's important that we state reasons why we would be rejecting or denying, concur, this application. And specific to what Attorney Coppola raised earlier this evening with respect to testimony that we heard. We really heard a lot of negative comments and accusations that were unsubstantiated without meritorious testimony to warrant the abolishment as they requested. It bothers me that they left before we deliberated. I, I really had hoped that they would stay to hear the deliberation, because this has been going on for such a long time. And the allegations that have been made that this was a devious push with some of the, one of the comments that it was underhanded and unethical. Everything was handled properly or in situations if there were mistakes made, they were corrected. There was lots of time for the applicant to submit their own application much earlier than they had. So there was no conspiracy or collusion that seemed to be part of the accusation also. And it's not staff's responsibility to offer legal advice or opinions to to the applicant. Nor was it staff's responsibility to offer legal advice or commentary with respect to the initial text amendment application that had been approved. It simply was an application for text amendment that we heard and considered. So I, I found throughout this process, there, they they really berated all of us. And it really was very offensive across the board, and especially to staff.
That is item B, not C.
All right, so all these, well.
I'll turn the page.
I, I just want, I just want to say that I, I agree with Commissioner George. And it's difficult at a time like this, because there is such an emotional level that's involved. And it tends to let out the worst of us sometimes. So stripping that all away and just thinking about the request to abolish the regulation. I'm having difficulty with the approval of that request. I think that you don't throw out the baby with the bathwater, so to speak. And I believe that there is some good that can come from this regulation. It is a work in progress. And I think that we just have to understand what the goal of the commission is. Look to see what's best for the community and the town and the impact. And proceed from there. But I, I'm not in the position where I wish to just completely abolish it or abandon it. Anyone else?
I think that was, I think both Commissioner George and Chairwoman Bailey, I think they were both very well spoken. And this does have support. Next amendment does have support from Prague and State, so. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, Ms. Daley. Yeah, I just want to recognize the community for their input and their concerns. And we certainly recognize it's been a challenge for them, and they put a lot of time into it. But I do support her comments here, that I don't think, go back to the beginning and have a new starting point would be what's in the best interest. And I think we can be continue on from where we, we've begun.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. All right, so we have the motion. We have a second. So further discussion going forward, and all those in favor. I, those opposed, so. Steve, Steven. Steve? Steve Baila? I'm sorry.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right, then the proposed the proposed amendment for the zoning regulation regarding the same residential. So we're going to go ahead and continue that. I'll move to continue. I'll make a motion to continue. Thank you, meeting of March seventh. All righty, Ms. George, a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Rogan. Further discussion, all those in favor. I, those opposed and moved. Okay, now we're going to look, okay, thank you, Steve. Additional events for the Berlin Lions Agricultural Fair. This is for the Connecticut Expo.
I'll make the motion to approve with staff and town council.
Okay, terrific. Motion to approve by Mr. Rogan, second by Mr. Hamel. And further discussion, comments, questions, all those in favor. I, those opposed and moved. Application, thanks, Steve. Applications of Tony Valenti, Newport Realty Group LLC for text amendment to the zoning regulations eight F three A Village Core Area one. So we're back to here. Okay, so this is just the text amendment, and it applies to the Village Core. And we've heard the explanation from the applicant. I think we all understand. Questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Can I ask that it be as modified by that being section three instead of section two?
Did I say section?
No, it was the, in the proposal, they have one and two.
Oh, okay.
I believe we corrected it during the hearing to be one and three.
One and three.
Of section eight F three A subsection one and subsection three.
And I'll, I'll clarify my motion to approve subject to staff comments. Okay, great. Ms. George has a motion to approve. Do we, who has a second? Nobody yet. Oh. Okay. Then further discussion on this. All those in favor? I, those opposed and moved. Special permit site plan application of Tony Valenti for the modifications. All right, so we've heard what the proposal is. Make a motion to approve subject to staff comments and the reversal of the tower. Are we?
Maybe work with staff to try and.
Let's try to get. All right, I think it just adds something. I mean, it doesn't have to be like super tall.
Yeah, that way when people get off the train, it's a nice clock tower.
Yeah, they just kind of can tell a time. They can say, hey, we can go to the hop house real quick. Let's hop over to the hop house, have a couple of drinks, and then we can catch the train back to Barstool. All right. I've got it all planned out. Just don't let him sit in my bar stool. Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. George. Ms. George, second by Mr. Hamel for the discussion. All those in favor?
I.
I know those chairs are very uncomfortable. So we'll try to see if we can do something. We have later comments, or.
I have later comments.
Okay, good night all. Cheers, good luck.
So for the calendar, for your calendars, A and, for your calendars and input back to you, to, to staff as to whether there's any issues. The town council has proposed a cannabis public input information meeting at the Berlin High School on March thirtieth at six PM. And would like the to have it be another combined meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission, if we can get a forum to attend as well. They will likely have it regardless, is what I understand. But again, I wasn't here for those discussions. Just what the little bird told me. So it will be at the Berlin High School, and I. So it will be at the Berlin High School and I believe the main intent is to get some feedback from the public as to what they're looking for because while we had the information session at the end of last month, there, it was information from the cannabis community, if so to speak. So this would be, and looking to see if the public has some comments. I'll remind you, and that's all for before we work on zoning regulations relating to it, to the uses. But you would be holding a public hearing within the Planning and Zoning Commission's purview on the matters as well.
All right, so March 30th at the high school.
At the high school.
Originally he said McGee.
Yeah, I believe it was not available.
Oh, I told him we're too young. Okay.
Six o'clock on the 30th, March 30th. Which is fills up the last Thursday of the month for everybody that thought they had one Thursday free when there was a fifth Thursday.
All right, I will be there. I'll commit to being there.
I can be there too.
And I hopefully the whole commission will be there.
Maureen sends those reminders out. I love them.
Yeah, don't worry.
Click, put it on my calendar and then it pops up automatically.
Can I just share something?
Yeah.
I just have something to share quickly on that that I learned today. I don't know how, maybe I shouldn't say anything, but I had a meeting with Consumer Protection to discuss the cannabis regulations that had been adopted. And what I learned is that they adopted the regulations in a manner that is not normally used. The Department of Public Health has the ability to adopt a regulation sort of temporarily. So the cannabis regulations are considered right now only policy. And they will be kind of in motion and changing over the next four years, at which point they'll go through the regulation approval process.
Are you talking about the Consumer Protection Regulations that I just read?
Yes, that is true. Yes.
So, so those are the recommended, you know, regulations again that have the security provisions. I had sent that document out. It's very long, yeah.
So one of the issues with those regulations that was brought to my attention in my work is that there is a section that talks about pesticide residues, acceptable pesticide residues within the finished product. And the materials on the list of on the list that is within their regulation draft don't comply with guidance that we've provided them and would be in violation of federal law. And so we're working with Consumer Protection, Department of Ed, and the Agricultural Experiment Station to review and modify that list.
What does this all mean?
Four year more for it.
It just means it wasn't circulated to all the people that needed the comment, right? Is, is in essence. Well, we're commenting now. So initially, it wasn't intended to be rolled out when it was. It was pushed off and, and so there was, there was sort of problems throughout, including with the timelines that were in the public act because there were some things that were missed and it did, it did cause some concern. But it got ironed out. So it'll get ironed out. It sounds like now it's before the right people to comment and they're gonna fix it. But yeah, I mean, these are, these are the things, right? And so going forward, did you mention that we're gonna have that March 30th?
Yeah, that's what I was announcing.
Okay, yeah, so we're, we'll gear up for that. You know, we'll, I'll do more of a presentation. I didn't, I didn't want to be heavy handed at the last combined meeting because I wanted you, the whole point was to get some prospective business owners in front of you who actually have experience. I think that you got, you know, you received good information from the folks that participated. And, you know, because there were different uses discussed, you know, your first, your first speaker that night, you know, she really got in to the business out analysis that they do from their perspective, which I thought was very good. But and then, and then you have, you know, you had somebody here who already owns a property. You know, that's interested in cultivation too, so not the retail side of it. And then obviously, Mr. Campbell, being that they have a number of businesses, obviously, they, you know, for some period of time, has a lot of experience as well. So.
Really comes down to, really what it comes down to is to our questions that we need to consider when we look at this public hearing is, do we want to sell it? Do we want to grow it? Do we want to have smaller micro growers or cultivators? There's three aspects to the bill, but we have to decide if we want to participate or eventually as a commission opt out of any one or all three. So that's, if I, if I'm still understanding, that's where we are.
So given, I can't believe we're already here in the middle of February, you know. I, I think about the last time you extended the moratorium and us all really thinking, myself included, that we would sort of be further along by this point on this. I, I'm wondering, would it be beneficial for me to resend all the information that I shared? Because I do have, I, I do have additional regulations and ordinances that have been passed, you know, because I, I do check the list. The list is published online of all the communities that have acted. And just to explain for the new members again, I can't remember when I told you this, but you know, what I've done is I've gone into the town websites for all the municipalities that have actually taken action and passing a regulation ordinance. And I've gotten a copy of what was passed and I've circulated it. So I do have, I gave big packets out, I think in two parts because it was so much. And, and, but I will say this to you, what's sort of interesting about that is when I last looked again, again, in terms of, you know, there's sort of this perception that so many municipalities are allowing this or that and whatever. And probably only half of the cities and towns in the state have actually taken action at this point. There are a number of municipalities that still have moratoriums placed and there are a number that have prohibited. So I can even give you those numbers to give you a sense as well as to where, you know, where are we at this point now that, you know, the hybrids are open and, and things are getting underway.
And Maureen, do you remember offhand how many are moratoriums until May 31st? Do we need to extend that? Should we put it on the agenda to extend it? We can always decide before that. Or?
I don't, I don't think it would be a problem to wait a little longer to add it to the agenda because you still have time to add it.
I think there's a cutoff that if we don't do anything or the council doesn't do anything.
Then it's considered as any other agricultural or.
I want us to be able to make.
Rather commercial uses, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, well, I, you know, we haven't talked about that. I, I, I will address you with regard to that. Because I don't have all my cannabis information in front of me. I don't, you know, because I have a specific opinion with regard to that. Because when, you know, when they got rid of the cap, remember they removed the cap? Because originally it was, I can't even remember now. I think it was one and one. Could have one, if you had a certain population, it was twenty or twenty-five. And then one and one, that was removed. And then, and then, but, but the press release and everything else that came out at the time that was, that it was removed, admitted very clear that the, the position coming out of the state was that the, the local authority was gonna decide if this use was allowed. So a little different perspective than what we heard initially.
Yeah.
So, but I, I wanna, I wanna explain to you, you know, why specifically I think what I do, but I just don't have all my my, I don't know, four red wells in front of me.
We're not missing anything.
I don't, I'd like to see you wait until after you have that March 30th meeting because, you know, I know the, the input from the public is important to you. Certainly, the council has expressed that as well. You know, we are going to advertise this. I think we should even consider putting an ad. I have some suggestions about it. I want the public to have an understanding of what we're looking to accomplish through that meeting. So, that informational meeting, so. So we're gonna get that underway.
March 30th, we have that. And then what the 23rd, we have.
Okay, so then we have the, where are my dates? Actually, did, almost all of you thought you'd be available for that meeting, right?
For the 30th.
For the 30th, okay. So I don't have anyone who knows that they're not available. If you aren't available, just let me know and.
And at the high school too, because they changed them. Replastic tans was just in case.
Did it all. We're good.
I, I have a question. So, yeah, are we expected to sit with the council? We don't, are we just sitting in the audience? I don't understand what our, our is here.
Well, the, the purpose of it is for it, for us to talk about it. So I, I think Maureen and I will give a presentation, just summary to the public. I made, I actually made the recommendation to the town manager already. I think we may create a cannabis page on the website so we could put some information up so people have an understanding, you know, who are interested in coming and commenting. But the, the purpose is really to get comments from property owners in town to see, are they in favor of particular uses or not? So, so I, I, yeah, I think that's really the point of it.
And just for, for the point of order at, and counsel. Correct me if I'm wrong, but to have reasonable participation, if you guys decide you want to speak and talk and ask questions and whatnot, if we know there's a forum, we'll notice it as such. And that's really the important part about whether you're being there or not being there and understanding how we have to notice it. If I was confident we didn't have a forum, then you'd just be going to a town council meeting, you know, the one or two people that was going. But if there's gonna be a forum of you and there might be discussion, then that discussion should be noticed because you're having a discussion, even if it's with council or town council and even if it's, you know, with the public. So just want to make sure that everything is noticed properly as well. I don't know the setup of the high school and the auditorium and how that might occur. We're gonna have to do probably a.
Tech session.
Yeah, tech session, figure it out and figure out. I mean, I think if you're not at, on some sort of dance or stage or something as the two commissioners, the two, two bodies, then I think it's probably appropriate if you're more upfront. That would be my recommendation. The mayor and the town manager may have a different view of, of what's best to garner public participation.
All right. I just want to make sure that Steve Biella, you understand that we're gonna be having an informational meeting regarding cannabis on March 30th?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're hoping that.
I could be there in person, yes.
All right, terrific. Thank you. Also, okay. And then do you need a head count for the?
So then we have the two other events. We have the Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies, March 23rd, five o'clock at AquaTurf, but you have a meeting that night. The March 23rd meeting is a P O C V meeting and at the P O C V meeting, we touched on it at the last meeting where I failed to ask that today when we had our meeting before next week's meeting. So if there's a lot of interest in going to that, I'll work with Francisco and Jim to find a new date for the P O C V meeting. It, my understanding is that one hour of the AquaTurf Conference will, should count towards training.
Should be more than that. What is that Zoom, right, this?
The March 11th.
March 11th is a Zoom.
So March 11th is the Bar Association, Land Use Law Seminar, and that is virtual. And I need the head count for that as well because I have to send it in so that you get the book. It's a book. So.
Is there a quiz or a test or anything?
Thank.
Oh, no.
So, Vaja, Diane for sure, Joan for sure.
But I will.
Yeah.
Zoom in.
I'll try.
Is anybody grinding and learning more about wetlands? About wetlands, because there's.
Yes, wetlands training.
Not tonight. That's, that's very good.
I'll send, I'll send you that.
Yeah, send it out. You do it, you know, as you have time.
Put the snowman up and then.
There will be portions of it that may be a little less relevant and more relevant. They have a Z E A section. They have wetland section, you know, so there's, there's time to go eat something and take the dog out. But it's, it is a great session. It has, I mean, this, and the speakers are quick, so you don't get bored. They, they rattle through the information very quickly.
Will that satisfy the training requirement?
Yes.
Does it satisfy the entire thing?
It does.
The whole thing, yes.
I believe you only need four.
Need, I, I agree that I believe it's four.
Good, I carry on credits to the next year.
I think it's every two years, isn't it?
I think there is something in there about that because I know we even have that.
It's, it's a lot. I mean, all at once.
The speech of the plans and what's interesting.
Oh, there.
All right, so we're going back to the, so it's March 11th. Okay, so who wants to go?
Well, that's, I mean, I would like.
This time call me before you're there. Absolutely.
You can call tomorrow.
All right.
You'll call me tomorrow. Brian was a yes. AquaTurf.
That's at the AquaTurf.
Yes. Joan was a yes. Steve, did Steve reply to either?
Yes, yes, yes for both, Maureen.
All right. Now, okay, now the other thing I want to ask you is that some commissioners here have been on the commission through the years, and I know they're doing award ceremonies. So can we double check on Ms. Jorsey?
So I wonder if any of you that happen to be here now know if you have gotten the 12-year award or the 25-year award?
I know, I've received no awards.
No awards. Okay.
I was supposed to get it a long time ago. Fifteen.
Okay, there is something about consistent years or consecutive years. And we'll see if they fix that yet because it might be consecutive years. And there was some discussion a year or two ago about that being, at least at the tables I was sitting around, we're like, whoa. But it's really just you three, right? Because then there wouldn't be anybody else. Yeah. Brian hasn't been on that long. You haven't been on 12 years.
Oh, my God. I think, if I think about it, I think I got 24.
I got on this before you, right, Joan?
Anybody going to that appreciation thing?
Oh, oh, yeah, the truck bar, Sunday bar.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot about that one. So.
The one next to that? Wait, I think that's the same guy who said AquaTurf. Wait, I think that's the same guy who's at Aquaturf.
It's for all commissioners, anybody who's certified commissioners.
No, it, it's a Tuesday, I believe, because I think it's the same night as Z B A. So there is on Tuesday, February 28th, the Economic Development Commission is having, or Economic Development is having a commissioner appreciation night at Truck Bar from five. I have from 4:30 to 6:30 in my calendar. You, you should be getting an email with regard to that.
You should have gotten it by now because Kate sent it out.
Okay, it said it?
Well, she sent it to.
Now she probably.
So Kate was saying. So I'm the liaison for this commission and I didn't send it out yet. I'll admit that. I got back on vacation and did not send it out yet.
I didn't have nothing to do one evening.
Yes, yes, yes.
YouTube and I watched.
Did you get the date on that?
Yeah, the 28th, 4:30, 4:30.
Okay, thank you. All right, I just want to make sure we included.
I'll try and make, but that's a little early.
For Joy, we'll be there all night.
I think, I think the invitation that you'll get will have a link to our S V P. It's an automated, so I don't need that head count.
Get one drink ticket and a piece of pizza.
Chris left.
I know.
Chris has those details.
I believe.
All right, so I don't know, Aquaturf sounds better than me. Well, we're going there. Okay. Is there anything else?
Let me just double check. The P O C D meeting is next Thursday night at 6:30 in the Doc Mac Room and via Zoom.
What is that?
The P O C D, Plan of Conservation and Development Committee Meeting.
What's it?
February 23rd.
Going there, I got.
And Maureen will be sending a reminder.
I believe you'll get
It's in my calendar.
Time allowing, you'll get the packet tomorrow because I think I got all the PDFs from Francisco's this evening.
All right. Oh, motion to adjourn.
You got it.
She has another question.
Can I have something on the blight list?
We can, we can, we can evaluate the blight list.
Why don't you just give them the address after the meeting adjourns on that? I don't know. At, at any time, anyone to.
Absolutely. All right.
Yep.
Motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion.
At 10:15. Motion belongs to Ms. Jorsey. Do you have a second?
I'll flag.
Can I give Mr. Rogan further discussion? All those in favor? I, opposed? All right.